Ready?
Ready.
Good afternoon, we are going to call our closed session to order for April 28th, 2025, current time is 4:30. City Clerk?
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Here.
Mayor Proton Benable?
Here.
Mayor Thorpe?
Here.
Absent from this meeting is Councilmember Beaver.
Perfect, and no public comment?
No public comments, sir.
All right, with that, we'll move into our executive conference room, and time is still 4:30.
Thank you.
and accessory agency and housing authority meeting to session on April 28th, 2025, current time is 6:05. Today's invocation will be Pastor Olin Ritchie, followed by the captain with our pledge. If you all please stand.
Let's pray. God, thank you for today, thank you for the opportunity to gather in this place, to do the important business of our city. God, thank you for the men and women who have taken the challenge to lead us. God, I pray that you would give them great wisdom, that you would give them great sensitivity, God, that you would give them the insights to lead well, and to lead us into the future that you have designed for us. Bless each one as they've gathered here, from our public safety people to just ordinary citizens. Would you bring us closer together? And God, would you be on display in this evening? For we pray all of these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Captain. Madam City Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Miller?
Present.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Present.
Mayor Proton Benable?
Here.
Mayor Thorpe?
Here.
Absent from this meeting is Councilmember Beaver.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, is there any reportable action from closed session?
There are no reportable actions.
Thank you, sir. Interim City Manager, any changes to our agenda?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda, however, a public hearing notice regarding firearm storage fees was published in the local newspaper for tonight's meeting. That item has been pushed to the May 12th regular city council meeting.
Perfect, thank you. With that, we'll move to our public safety update, starting with Captain Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be your March 2025 public safety report for the Ucaipa Police Department. So for the month of March, we had 3,596 calls for service. We averaged a four-minute response time to our emergency calls for service. And again, like I've said at a couple of previous presentations, that our peak call times still remain in the afternoons, Monday through Thursday. Part One Crimes for the month of March, we had one robbery, 26 assaults, eight burglaries, 25 larcenies, and one motor vehicle theft. In March, we had 92 arrests, our most common arrests for the month of March were narcotics-related offenses, warrant arrests, trespassing violations, and domestic violence incidents. Our traffic enforcement division at the police department wrote 183 traffic citations. They investigated 38 traffic collisions. We had 11 DUIs in the month of March. The team did 60 extra patrols or targeted enforcement operations, just focusing on our high-volume areas, as I stated before, our problem areas that are reported to us through the community, or areas where we see an increase in poor driving behavior or traffic collisions in a certain particular area. And the team towed 19 vehicles. Our SOP team fielded 20 transient calls for service for March. There was 14 app submissions on the City of Ucaipa app. Six of the subjects they contacted accepted some form of assistance. The team was able to work with our other partners at the city, code enforcement and public works, to clean up five encampments. Or they just, they either cleaned up the encampment or removed a high volume of debris from certain areas, like in our washes, where those, you know, trash and things start to accumulate, they were able to get in there and get those cleaned up. The team wrote 11 parking citations. They did multiple vacant home and vacant property checks, as well as our regular patrols of our city parks throughout the area, looking for work in those areas. And then they also continued to collaborate with our local businesses, and we were able to update 12 of our letter of agencies with our local businesses, which allows us to act on their behalf. If you don't know, the law recently changed where those letter of agency forms now have to be notarized, they can't just be filled out at the station. So, a little bit of an extra bureaucracy and legwork for us, but we're going through the process of getting with everybody and getting those notarized forms on file. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that will conclude my presentation.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Chief Menosky?
Evening, Mayor and Council. This will be your March report for the fire department, so again, another very busy month for us, 697 calls for service in March. I'm sorry, that would be, yeah, in March. We had the honor of playing baseball with the challengers, and also the legends, but that's, that's next month's report. We were able to do community services, Narcan training. We have most of our community services, we have a lot of part-timers, so we have a plethora of part-timers for community service. We provide that Narcan training, Stop the Bleed training. We participated in the Ucaipa Take a Hike, a little bit more challenging on the mountain bike trail, so just in case, we like to be there, like to be there anyways. But Women's Empowerment Fire Camp, so this was in cooperation with Crafton Hills College. They do two events focused at getting women into allied health careers, and then specifically fire department. And there was hundreds of girls up there doing, doing the same thing that everybody else does at our job, and they loved it, it was a great hit. It's hit significant structure fire on Highland Avenue, significant commercial vehicle fires, so tractor-trailer there. And then we had two big successes with the city staff here, with Cory, Todd, our grant writer, and submitting a, landed a $900,000 grant for El Dorado post-fire litigation grant. And then, and just the feedback sounds like that's moving through the process, so it'll be a big win for us. And also a Sam and Wells Care Grant we submitted. So those aren't approvals, but they're looking in the right direction. That's what I have for you, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And Trevor? Code enforcement?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is... There we go. This is going to be your code enforcement report for March 2025. So in March, we had 40 new cases submitted. Of those 40 new cases submitted, eight of them were resolved by the end of the month. This photograph on the right-hand side is a good depiction of an example of some of the code enforcement cases that we're getting, where we've been getting, and this is extreme hoarding. Of those top cases, unpermitted construction, unpermitted land use, trash and debris, storage in the front yard, setbacks and expired permits, but in this case, it's a hoarding situation. This was submitted two months ago. It took some time to get corrected, but in my next slide, you'll see a before and after. So this is the after. So it's just an example of, you know, kind of some of the cases that they're dealing with. They do take a long time, a lot of effort's put into it, but there's a good result at the end. As far as inspection activity, there were 136 inspections that the code enforcement officers conducted. 111 of those cases were closed out. The city received $1,453 in citation fees. There were five mobile home cases opened, and we completed two comprehensive mobile home re-inspections. There were two poultry ranch inspections with no violations noted, and four properties were approved for the fine forgiveness program, which is still ongoing. We're seeing great results with that, and we encourage the community to still be involved in that if they can. And that's the end of my report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Great job, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do, we have several. We will start with Minister Cliff, followed by Richard Frost.
Well, thank you. I hope you don't mind another press person coming in. And I want to thank you for having the person call me from City Hall, telling me to come in here today, and that you would keep your promises made by the other councilman prior to make me the city marshal and the pro temp judge here in Ucaipa. I'm here to be sworn in. If you've got a Bible, you can swear me in right now. Well, if you refuse to do that, then the people know that your promises that you tell these people isn't worth a damn. Then also, you've got people in this city that keep breaking our constitutional rights. As a bounty hunter, I'm able to get information that you don't think I have. So I guess I'll end this with telling you the last word that Jesus said on the cross. "Please, God, forgive them here, for they not know what they do." And his last three words were, "It has come to an end." So you're not going to swear me in? Maybe I should ask also, during our ballots, when we did election, there wasn't no name on Area 3, but you have a lady sitting there that you put on ballot, on council, and then you had people caught up in the recall, and recall is legal, and the people voted that recall was legal. And Measure S didn't pass. Thank you.
Richard Frost, followed by Carol Rem.
Yeah, I saw where a Tesla charging station's coming to Ucaipa. Well, who's going to supply security in case Elon Musk haters come to town and want to do some damage or something, you know? You know, with all the, you know, with all the vandalism of Tesla cars and stations and that.
Do you want me to do some sign language, so you can understand what we're saying?
Carol Rem, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Just as a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, you have three minutes to speak, we're not supposed to engage with you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I came tonight just to hear more about the new warehouses that are going along the freeway, and to maybe get some comments on how the traffic and congestion would be addressed on that, and that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Hanson Wong.
Hi, Hanson Wong, Ucaipa. So, one quick item for public service, there was quite a few people at the run on Saturday, which was good. Unfortunately, our first class on drugs and so on had zero. So, we're going to have some flyers in the classes. If you think of any ideas, as a city council member, city staff, or residents, to help us get people to these classes, let the Health Ucaipa Committee know, okay? Thank you very much. All right, so we're approaching a new year, starting in July, new fiscal year, and so on. So a couple of things we should consider. One, and there's going to be new land projects and so on. So, historically, looking back at what our councils did previously, and looking at the freeway corridor, it seems like that they want, maintain the impression of a rural city of Ucaipa and a quality city. The second thing is that we ensure that the resultant development meets the needs of the city residents and commercials to bring in tax revenue in order to take care of the city. And, you know, we have a great concern, because our fiscal ability as to cost of different items, first responders, and other things increases, we need to make sure that we can keep up to date. To provide for appropriate use intensity and density that leads to economic viable development opportunities for the owners, because again, they own the property. And again, this is not my words, these were words from previous functions, previous committees and council members and so on. The other thing to consider is the fact that with the new land projects, we need to have a presentation that shows this is what is in compliance with the general plan and specific plan, this is the, this is the bonus densities, and then above and beyond, this is what the property owner or developers asking for, which they have every right to, but we need to have a reason and accountability for why we should do this. And sometimes, we forget to do that. Looking at our contracts to take care of the roads and other things, we need to make sure that we look at the bids as city council members, and that we look at the costs and their expertise, especially doing an EIR. Thank you very much.
We have several cards for item nine, we'll hear those comments when we get to that item.
Perfect, thank you, ma'am. That brings us to Councilmember Conflict of Interest Disclosures. Do we have any conflicts that we need to disclose tonight? Nope? All right. Moving on to consent agenda. Items one through six, is there a motion to move one through six, or are there any items to pull?
I moved to approve a consent agenda as written.
I just have a question on number two.
So do you want to pull it for questions?
I'm just going, you know, I just have one question. That's, we can, I could say it, it's quick.
All right, let's go for it.
It's our usage, our app usage that our city uses, right? To report everything. I think we should bring that up in the next meeting, maybe, or a future meeting, so everybody can see how well it's working. You know what I mean? It gets tucked into the consent, consent agenda, and nobody gets to see, you know, how our apps are getting used and stuff, and they're fabulous. I mean, I talked to so many people and stuff, and I think that everybody out here would love to see that.
Well, we could pull that item, and they can do that presentation on that, if you want them to do that tonight. Is that what you'd like to do?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll pull item number...
You know what? Do you have the...
I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for that, I just have the numbers that are provided in the staff report, but going forward...
Okay, we can do it next time.
Yeah, we can, I'd be happy to put together a little presentation. Is that something that the council would like to add? Kind of like the public safety update? Is that something that you wish to see on a regular basis, or...
Any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Mayor Proton, we should show that up on the screen, because it's pretty impressive, actually.
It is.
Of how we're getting the, the reports in with the app. So, Ms. Crawford, I'm sure, Ms. Crawford, if you could have that next time visually, we'll just throw it on the board and show everybody what's going on, and I appreciate that.
Clerk had a question about including it with our public safety updates, so would you like that as part of our normal public safety updates with the captain and the fire chief?
I think it's perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Will that work?
Since it's a receive and file, we'll just add it as a department report in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right.
I'll second.
So I have a first and a second to move items one through six. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That brings us to item number seven. Chief? It's all you.
Right, good evening again, Mayor and Audible Council. So the agenda item before you tonight is for two new fire engines for the fire department fleet. These would not be additional engines, these will be replacing our existing frontline medic engine 551 and medic engine 552. Our scheduled lifespan for a frontline engine is 10 years, 100,000 miles. Medic engine 551 is a 2016 KME with 96,000 miles, and medic engine 552 is a 2012 KME with 125,000 miles. The current manufacturer lead time for a Type 1 or city fire engine is approximately 24 months. Approval tonight would provide an approximate delivery of May to June of 2027. This is part of the reason the Finance Committee moved this procurement before the next fiscal year budgets. Upon arriving, upon arrival of the existing frontline engines, we'd be placed as reserve engines at their respective stations. Our scheduled lifespan and total useful life of reserve Type 1 is 20 years, 200,000 miles for complete service life. The current reserve engines, engine 551A is a 2003 Pierce with over 200,000 miles, and engine, reserve engine 552A is a 2002 Pierce with over 190,000 miles. We would seek staff's or council's direction, but we would typically list these as excess property upon the arrival of the new equipment. After 20 years of hard service, these vehicles are typically donated to a college fire program or a very small fire department, as their resale value is typically comparable to scrap, which I probably should have got quotes on that, because scrap's probably worth a lot right now, so they're big metal boxes. But we would come back to you with a recommended disposition, obviously, on that. So, we have a seen by overextending our fleet past these, these guidelines, has shown increased breakdowns, increased out-of-service times, increased maintenance costs, and a decreased reliability of our, of our fleet and reserve fleet. There are some other options available out there, where they pre-build the majority of the fire engine, or they already have an already-built fire engine. These options would not see much of an appreciable price difference. They may yield a slightly quicker delivery time, but would definitely not meet our needs. In this case, patience for the right purchase outweighs the gratitude of the quick purchase, especially when it's a high-dollar, 20-year investment. Ucaipa has a need for a multi-role fire engine. These engines do, they do need to be able to pump high-volume capacity of water in the city setting for residential, commercial, wide-rise, and hotel-type fires. But with our city encased in a very high, very high fire hazard area, they also need to have characteristics that allow us to aggressively attack wildfires. This includes appropriate clearance, heavier-duty suspension, and pump-and-roll capability, as opposed to traditional city engine, which operates off a PTO. You pretty much have two options, pump or drive, but not both at the same time. There could also be a slight savings if we went with a lighter buildup. This would be adequate if we operated a volunteer fire department with a handful of calls a month, in a medium-sized city with 9,000 calls a year, and has witnessed recently some of the largest incidents in the entire nation. These builds would almost always met with a catastrophic failure, and departments believe they bought a lemon when they really purchased, purchased a unit that didn't meet their demand or specifications, which is why the proposal is for a severe-duty platform, which is... which is why the proposal is for a severe-duty platform, which is our entire current existing fleet. I know council's aware of the consolidation of fire engine, engine building into very few builders at this point and the atmosphere and buying conditions that it creates. Unfortunately, that isn't just one manufacturer or the recommended manufacturer, it's all of them. It's a systemic issue. And there's pretty much five major players in fire engine purchasing now, and there's, that's the bandwidth now. After considering all factors, we have selected the KME for the proposed builder. These purchases would be an updated clone of our last build, the 2021 KME medic engine 553, which has proved to be a very good and reliable engine, meeting our demand at the busiest station in the city with the least amount of downtime. That build was also a successive build based off our existing 551 and 552 engines. Each time we refine our spec, the newer build has always proved better than the previous version. This would be a sole-source utilizing Sourcewell contract 113021. Utilizing a Sourcewell contract is a piggyback off a fire department that has already put a build specification through a competitive bid process. In this case, it was San Bernardino County Fire, whose buildup is the same as ours. We have different cosmetic and layout difference, which makes it our Ucaipa Fire Department specification. We've been very happy with that specification on the build side. And a side note, just in February, County Board of Supervisors approved 10 engines from KME. Annually, the Fire Department budget's a line item for capital equipment replacement directly back into the Fire Fund for this type of purchase. The Fire Fund conservatively has a $5 million balance. And since we are still in the fiscal year, we can't give actuals past that, but we do expect to be well under budget this year again. Also, with last year's catastrophic fire season and heavy mutual aid response, we do expect a healthy reimbursement from statewide fire response through OES and CAL FIRE reimbursements. This purchase would be from Fire Fund, not from General Fund, for note. This item has been presented, approved by the Finance Committee and Public Safety Ad hoc for full council presentation. In page 96 of your packet, there's several options. Staff is recommending option number two with the lengthy delivery time to pay on arrival, which would be $2,742. There is an option number one, which is prepay. It would show 11.7% prepayment discount. But I think upon finance review, and I won't speak for them, but they've, having that reserve in hand was better than getting the discount. We would fare better by holding it for two years, especially if we get delays or whatever and that payment gets extended. There are some other options in there for your consideration, such as leasing. And you can see with a healthy reserve where those would be an additional cost to us with interest and such. So, that is, concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Thanks, Chief. I just have a comment. You know, you see your beautiful trucks, they're beautifully clean, they're beautiful. But I guess the analogy would be, you start up, you run hard, you come back. You start up, you run hard to the call, you come back. And that's where the maintenance on the truck is the issue, right? I think we're repairing more than we, or your engine, repairing more than usual. It's that hard run back, hard run back, but they look beautiful driving down the street. So, I think, you know, our citizens think, well, it looks like a beautiful truck, but you're up here 100,000, 200,000 miles. What's the standard that we had talked about before?
That's it. It's frontline 10 years, 100,000 miles, reserve 20 years, 200,000 miles. And you're right, imagine a, if you had an RV, so if anybody who owns an RV, running that RV 200,000 miles, a diesel motor, you want it for long hauls. But we're doing the complete opposite. You know, we're starting, going fast, we have 500 gallons of water, weighing it down. We have pumps, all this, you know, pumping every day, the pump hours. And how long would that RV last? 20 years is great because we try to keep them, you know, that's my direction to staff. We keep that engine as close to 100% as possible through its entire service life, which is why they look nice, they just get beat up. Like, I think anybody in this room, as we age, it just doesn't work the same anymore when you, when you start getting up there in age, so.
Thanks.
Well, they're expensive. There, no doubt, they're expensive. And it looks like KME is taking the market, what they've done to consolidate. So, and the price is what it is. Could you live with one in fiscal '27 and one in fiscal '28 ordered their two-year build-out, if I understand?
So, that's, that's your discretion. I mean, we've gotten to the point because of deferrals, so it would, that's totally your discretion. We can live with whatever.
Mr. White, question for you. So, if we outlay the $2 million, how are we, where are we holding that money?
Yeah, so the Fire Fund, next item, little sneak preview. Fire Fund has, as of '24, $7.5 million projected deficit in fiscal '25 of just under $3 million. As the Chief mentioned, we always do better than budget. So, we're estimating a $5 million balance as of the end of fiscal '25. This money, this $2 million, would come out of that Fire Fund, reduce that $5 million to a projected $3 million. And then, we're looking at, we're building the budget for fiscal '26 right now. So, it's, as the Chief mentioned, it's not general fund money, it's out of the Fire Fund money. And so, that's where it would come from.
Chief, I have one question along the lines of Councilman Miller talking about the phased-in approach. If you phased in the trucks, would that be better for down the road for purposes of replacement again, so we're not purchasing two simultaneously again down the road?
The problem we have right now, though, is the fleet, we're there already with what we have. So, we don't, we're fixing a future problem, not the existing problem. So, I mean, what's more important, the existing problem or the future problem? And my one has, my one concern to you would be, they have gone up exponentially in cost. So, when we built, and it's not in your staff report, but when we built 552, it was 530,000. That was 2012. When we built 551, it was 680. When we built 553, I'm sorry, when we built 551, it was, it was 530. We built 553, the newest engine, it was 680, and that was only four years ago. And it's gone up almost double in price in that short amount of time. So, it's like goes into that, so I don't know what the, what that will look like any year, what that price is gonna look like. I mean, it could come down, but that's, that's your discretion, so.
I was just curious, because, I mean, I know we have a need right now, but I'm just thinking down the road, when we get to that need again, now we're gonna be doing two at a pop then again, because they'll be hitting their end-of-service date or effective life at that same time, more than likely.
I think our disparity would be better, though, because we can be more on a schedule for replacement. Then, we're extending that option a year would be less of an impact now when we have an engine that's gonna be, we have a, the reserve engine will be 25 years old and the frontline will also, will be 15 years old, so it's gonna have a shortened reserve life. So, either, we would do whatever, whatever you say. That, you know, both would be good options and it is definitely something to consider.
I appreciate your perspective. We got a, okay, we got a video sent to us by staff concerning the manufacturers and kind of the monopoly of the market and whatnot. And so, I was gonna have our PIO, Mr. Perdido, come up and give some information on that as well before we vote on this, so.
Okay, and then, like we, like we had said, it's not just that rev group. It's all of the smaller builders have been bought up by basically the five major builders. So, there's, there's definitely a consolidation of options out there, so.
If we have the money right now, I mean, it would save us, what, 250,000 bucks?
It would save you, it would cost less by, I didn't write the number down, it's like 252,000.
Yeah, so if we had the money right now to save us 250,000 bucks down the road, would we not wanna do that?
Well, typically, we would, but we're, at the current moment, we're talking about a two-year build-out, and so...
On both, both items, either way.
Yeah, so...
And there's the, is, is it gonna go up in the two years while they're building it? Or is it locked in at that price?
Locked in.
It is locked in.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, the...
So, over...
And that's right.
That's $75,000 a year if it's a two-year thing, and that's, I mean...
Yeah, 125,000 a year, but...
All right, yeah, 125,000.
So, so, yeah, but it would be a two-year build-out. The money that's held currently, we're earning interest on it. And then, the two-year, a year ago, it was not a two-year build-out. Joe's gonna talk a little bit about some of the issues that are going on currently. But that number, the build-out number and the cost number are in fluctuation. Recent history, those numbers have gone up and the build-out has gone out. But, but those things are subject to change month to month.
Thank you.
Mayor and Honorable City Council, Joe Perdido, Director of Governmental Affairs. For a quick background for the public and for those, so they know what video you're referencing, there's been a years-long effort by public equity firms to purchase and accumulate companies that build fire engines and the supplies that go into the manufacturing. That has led to a consolidation so that there's fewer companies, and those fewer companies control all the inputs, for the most part. The smaller companies that do produce typically don't get the business because they don't have the track record and the critical mass to meet the demands of some of the bigger agencies. So, although it's not completely dominated effectively for large agencies, it is. What that has done is led a few companies to control the market and prices have increased in addition to other inflation through the past several years. This is a problem that cities throughout, cities, counties, fire agencies throughout the country have experienced, and it has led to concerns such that Senators Baker and Warren have launched a congressional investigation just a couple of weeks ago. They are in the process of gathering information to begin that inquiry. And so, this is brand-new information that we learned after the agenda was published. As part of purchasing this, we wanted to bring that to your attention in the event that you would like for staff to bring back for you a letter to our senators and our congressperson encouraging them to support this congressional inquiry in the hope that, regardless of the action you take, that this helps create a more competitive market that benefits all agencies because we're not the only ones experiencing this huge increase. So, that's a quick bit of background. We don't know what the outcome will be, but the good news is, is at the federal level, there is sufficient concern to drive a congressional investigation. And we do have an opportunity to support that through your advocacy to our federal representatives.
Thank you, Joe. Does council have a desire for that letter to go forward? Yes? Consensus is yes, so I would support that. I would like to see that brought back so that we can...
We'll have that ready for your next meeting.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Dialogue? Do we have any public comment on this item, ma'am?
No comments on this item.
Okay.
I'll make a motion on number two.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Phil White, item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Item eight is the receive and file of the June 30th, 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or ACFER. From a financial reporting perspective, municipalities are structured to execute spending plans or budgets. We're not built to quickly provide financial reporting on actual numbers. However, we do issue an annual, an ACFER annually, which is, has components that are audited. In our case, the audited components of the ACFER received an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. And we'll go through a couple of the highlighted sections of the June 30th, 2024 ACFER. Again, this is June 30th, 2024. We had a brief discussion just now on some of the numbers related to June 30th, 2025. And we are compiling the June 30, 2026 budget. So, we're working through three different budget years all at the same time. These are the actual results for June 30th, 2024. They take some time to close, as do all municipalities. All right, all of the contents of the ACFER are important, but I did wanna use my time here to highlight three different financial statements. The fund level, the governmental fund-level balance sheet, the governmental fund-level income statement, and the general fund budget-to-actual comparison. There are multiple balance sheets in the ACFER. This is the governmental funds balance sheet. It is not the government-wide statement of net position. It is not the proprietary fund statement of net position, nor is it the fiduciary balance sheet. This is the governmental fund balance sheet. So, I, I thought that this was important to share, but all the information in the ACFER is important. This is just a brief highlight. The green box is the general fund. We hear a lot about the general fund. These are the assets, the liabilities, and the equity or fund balance of the general fund. They're in green because our general fund looks spectacular. In red, next to it, is the Development Impact Fee Capital Projects Fund. This looks less spectacular and is highlighted in red. You can see down in the fund balance, there's brackets, that means a deficit. So, there's a deficit, $21 million fund balance for the DIF Capital Projects Fund. And then, to say where we are in total, you would go all the way to the right. Again, this is governmental funds only, but in light gray over on the right, this is total governmental funds, everything added up together. Those funds across the top are considered major funds. GAAP considers those as major. We also have a combining non-major fund column. And again, over on the right, it's a total. And then, down, the highlighted gray box is total fund balance. That's the equity for each of these. That's important as we work through this, but our income statement number, you'll see the similar numbers as we go through that. That balance sheet is considered, I would consider that balance sheet healthy. However, it does highlight some things that we need to keep a close eye on, and I did wanna highlight those. One is, we're always looking to protect our general fund unassigned fund balance, which is highlighted right there in the bottom right in green. That's, that $18 million number represents a, an increase of $3 million from the prior year. And that is, that's the key, that's our runway. In times of deficit, that number is, is our runway to bad news. We wanna keep that number as high as possible. Adding $3 million is a fantastic result for this fiscal year. We also are monitoring total fund balance of all funds. Also, green, we added $7.5 million to that number over there on the right, up to $51 million in the current year. We're always monitoring cash and cash flow, making sure that we have enough cash to pay our bills. We added $3.5 million to our cash balance, top right, right over there. That number's an increase of $3.5 million from the prior year. On the, on the other side, things to monitor are inter-fund advances. They continue to be an issue that we're, that we're inspecting. We've talked about the DIF inter-fund advances quite a bit. In the DIF fund, that $17 million is our balance. That decreased from $2 million in the prior year. It was closer to $19 million, now it's down to $17 million. We also have a low-water crossings fund that has a deficit there of about a million and a half. And that gets us over to the $19 million in inter-fund advances. The reason that that's highlighted is the number way over here on the right, that 19 million has an arrow coming back up. It's because our general fund calls that $19 million an asset due from other funds. And that asset is only valid to the extent that it's going to be repaid and collected by the general fund. As we go through that, it's been out there for a long time, not collected. It's whittling down, which is great, but it's a slow process. Because it's a slow process and it's a long-term receivable, we classify that as non-spendable equity, non-spendable fund balance. And so, that's why there's that arrow going down. All of those things are interrelated and they sort of inflate the perceived health of our general fund because that is a long-term receivable, sitting there as an asset, adding to our equity in the general fund. It's just important to monitor those things. Also, that, that, that good number, that unassigned fund balance, that $18 million, as we work across to the right, we have a big negative $20 million in that DIF fund. Funds other than the general fund, called their negative equity, they classify that as unassigned. So, that's a real number, that unassigned in the general fund, as we work across. It's kind of a plug number for deficits as we work across, just something to be aware of. There are also other significant items on the balance sheet that, that are worth noting. One is that we have a $4.5 million loan receivable for a, for, it's, it's a loan with an option to purchase property. That $4.5 million is classified in our facilities construction fund, and it's right there. It's not cash, it's not an investment, it's outside of our investment portfolio. It's not part of our cash number, it's part of a loan receivable number, right there, $4.5 million. million. Also, we have advances that we receive, grants that are advanced to us, we, where we don't incur the cost yet and we don't call it revenue yet. One such thing is the library grant that we've been talking about. That money was, they advanced $4.5 million to the city, we're holding that as of June 30th, 2024. That's sitting right here as unearned revenue. It's, that one is included in cash. So part of this number up here is that $4.5 million of cash sitting as unearned revenue. The reason that all of this is important is because the balance sheet does not have, there's no budgets involved with the balance sheet. These are just balance sheet balances. And so you're not going to hear about them during budget season or anything. They just sit on our balance sheet and you hear about them in presentations such as this. All of the important things, excuse me. The big-ticket items on the balance sheet, there's also footnote disclosures for them. There is a footnote disclosure for this whole section, fund balance, and it details out what those numbers are. I've highlighted that committed number, that $13.5 million. And that is included in a footnote disclosure on page 52 of the ACFER, it's footnote 14. And this details out all the, all of those equity components. So non-spendable fund balance, there's our advances number right there in the general fund. As we work down, we see our $50 million of fund balance in the general fund. This is, all of footnotes is where you can see detail. There's also a narrative for all of these numbers and they can tell you what they're, what they're all about. So there's our inter-fund, because it's long-term, it's considered non-spendable. We also have restricted fund balance. That refers to a third party restricting the available use of those funds, typically grants, things like that are restricted. We can only use them for certain things. And that restricted category, all of these things are restricted, they're all in our non-major funds. But you can see for capital projects, we have 62,000 restricted fund balance. Public works, we have six, a little over $6 million in, in fund, in restricted fund balance, and so on and so forth. So it's all restricted fund balance restricted by a third party. If we internally restrict resources, the term for that is committed. So we have committed fund balance to these things. And we have a $5 million economic contingency. When we had Tropical Storm Hillary, we had $5 million of damage. It was an option to use that contingency to pay for the damage. The City Council chose to not use that, but that money is sitting aside waiting for a disaster to occur so that we have money set aside to respond to that disaster. We also have an economic stabilization of a million dollars. And then I just mentioned the $7.5 million in the fire fund. In fiscal '24, the fire fund rolled into the general fund, and that's where that $7.5 million is, right there. So again, it's $7.5 million as of '24. In '25, we have a, a $3 million deficit that's going to get the number closer to $5 million in the, in the fire fund. And based on that last action, we're going to be down to $3 million entering fiscal '26 of fire committed fund balance. Assigned is a, is also an internal restriction, although it's, it's less stringent than, than committed. In order to reach the committed bucket, it needs a resolution or an ordinance. The city manager can assign to items within this category. So we have $8 million sitting in the facilities construction fund that is assigned to capital projects. And then unassigned is, is everything else. It's important to know what's in those categories and the level of constraint as we're making budget decisions. All right. Enough with the balance sheet. Onto the, the fund level income statement. This shows, one thing that I did want to highlight is the net change in fund balance right in there. That's, that's our change statement, that's our number that we actually had for each of those funds. This shows revenues, expenditures, and then that net change. What this reflects is a actual surplus in the general fund of $222,000 for fiscal year '24. We had an actual surplus in the DIF fund of $3 million. And overall, over here, all funds, we had an actual surplus of $7.5 million. So that is a great result. All of our revenues are up on top, all of our expenditures by function are over here on the left. And so that, that result is a, is a very good result. However, we talk a lot about budget and budgetary deficits. The ACFER also includes a statement that reconciles budget, which is a spending plan, spending estimates, with actual results. And that is on page 60 of the ACFER. All right, so on page 60, our general, this is specifically for the general fund. Each fund has a budget, budget to actual statement that's included. Again, this is audited information. We have our, what was adopted by City Council. All the changes that are made when we ask for budget amendments throughout the year roll into what we call the final column. So this is what we compare, the final budget, to actual results. This actual column ties to the page that we were just looking at. And then this last column says, here's the difference between what was budgeted and what was actually received or spent. And so a couple of things here. One, on the revenue side, we got more revenue than we had anticipated by 4%. That 4% is historically, it's always the case, it's between 4% and 6%. Ever since Ucaipa was born, it's, it's been the same number. We're, we're better on the revenue side by 4% to 6%. And the reason for that is because we do not need an appropriation to receive money. We can be conservative with our estimates to, to make sure that we're not overspending. And so we budget revenues conservatively and typically budget costs up to those revenues. Expenditures are typically always under budget. And the reason for that is expenditure, in order to spend, we, there legally needs to be an appropriation. And so we can't spend without an appropriation. And because of that, we're always estimating high and, because we can't spend if there's not an appropriation. So the way that it works is we're always under budget on, on expenditures and over budget on revenues. In this case, we were 10% under on, on the expenditure side, which may seem good, but 10% is actually the, the tightest it's ever been. Historically, we're between 20% and 30% under on expenditures. And that's not, that's not, that's both recent past and going, going way back. The reason that we're under budget is, is a couple of different things. One is, the primary reason is because services and programming is not delivered. Typically, we're not under budget because we get a better deal on something. We spend what we spend, we spend to provide services, that's what we do. And so to the extent that we don't perform a service or provide the programming, we don't spend it, and that's one reason that we're under budget. In this particular year with, with Tropical Storm Hillary, the storm cleanup was budgeted. We didn't get through the, all of the storm cleanup, so we were, we had several million dollars that moved over into the following fiscal year because we didn't get to it by the end of '24, even though it was all budgeted. So that was a second reason. And then the third reason in the general fund is we had capital equipment that we ended up not procuring, so we were under budget on that. Again, it's different than a private company where if we do better than estimates, that means we're more profitable in a municipality. It just means that we didn't deliver the services, we didn't finish our storm cleanup, or we didn't buy the equipment that we had, that was included in the spending plan. So that's important to note. And I also did want to highlight, I made the statement that, of where we were based on historical actuals. I did throw in a couple of general fund budget to actual statements from previously issued ACFERS. And so back in '21, we were 5% over on revenue. It's always the number between 4% and 6%. And here, we're at 21% under on the expenditures. On the transfers, going back, for some reason, we did not budget transfers. We do now. So we're, we're on budget in '24. Let me go back one and show you. On that statement right there, under other financing, sorry. Goodness, getting excited here. Right there, under other financing sources and uses, you can see that our transfers out are budgeted now. Going back, they weren't. And so you can see the big, the actual number significantly exceeds the budgeted number for transfers out. But at any rate, we were 20%, 21% under on expenditures. And then going way, way back to 2008, there's the, there's the 5% again over on, on revenues, we're always there. And then again, between 20% and 30% on expenditures, we're at 25% in '08. The reason that that's important is now we're down to 10%, which means our budgets are getting really tight. You've been hearing, hey, these are our costs, we're really tight on budgets, we're locking it in. It's true. And going back to the '24 actual report, it, it shows up here where our budgets are getting really tight. We're looking for, back in these days, we had significant surpluses. You can see our budgeted number right here, net change, is a positive number, positive number. And that's a $4.2 million surplus in the general fund. So we were, we had significant surpluses of that back then. The problems then are different than the problems now. And so it, they all kind of work together and they show up in the budgets, but they also show up in the actuals. If I could just slide back one slide here, this is back in '21. Goodness. I know. Okay, so check this out. So the net change in fund balance, we had a budgeted deficit in 20, this is '21, a budgeted deficit of $400,000. And then our final budget deficit was $3 million. And then we had an actual deficit of $2.5 million. And again, that goes back to '21. And so our deficit that we have is not brand-new. That's our audited 2021 financial statements, and it goes back at least that far. There's 2008 again. And then just to wrap the whole thing up, the Finance Committee did review this at their most previous meeting and recommended taking it to the full City Council. All of the audited components of the ACFER were unmodified, it was a clean audit opinion. The audited financial statements do have a couple of things to highlight. One is the DIF program and those balances are something to keep monitoring. We're always trying to preserve unassigned fund balance and we're, we have a trend of a tightening budget to actual that, that we need to monitor, and that's something that we've been talking a lot about and we'll continue to talk about. There are three attachments to this item. One is the ACFER. We also have an alternative compliance examination engagement, which is our audit of federal funds. That was also a clean audit opinion on that. And then we have an audit conclusion letter, and that audit conclusion letter is only exciting to the extent that there's bad news reported, and Ucaipa did not have any bad news to report in 2024, but that letter is included as well as, for that attachment. The recommendation on this item is a receiving file, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff? Any questions for staff? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. White, thank you for the report. I appreciate that, even though it'll just be a receiving file. Could you explain a little bit, when we were talking about the asset side of the House, the buckets that we have for the funds that we've talked about before? You reflect them in the fund balance, but explain them buckets to everybody in the audience. What does that mean?
Yeah, sure. So, so here's our governmental funds balance sheet. We've, this includes assets. We, there's different components of, of an asset. The, the ones that are easier are cash and investments, those are, those are liquid. We also have long-term items in the general fund. Again, that DIF inter-fund loan is a, is a $18 million asset. From this balance sheet, it's, it's, it looks like it's, it's equivalent to cash. It's not. It's a long-term inter-fund receivable. And so if you were just to look at total assets in the general fund and consider them all equal, you'd be missing some important context with, with our general fund balance sheet. The liabilities are, our liabilities typically accounts payable. And then, and then the difference between assets and liabilities is equity. And what we call equity in, in the municipal world is, is fund balance. And that fund balance, the, it's, equity is not all equal. It's, it's, there's different levels of constraint. We have almost $20 million of, of equity that we call non-spendable. And if it's non-spendable, the question is, is it, is it, is it really equity? It is, it's just non-spendable. You can't do anything with it until, until the general fund receives the repayment of those inter-fund balances, then you can do something with it. But until then, it just sits there as a number and it sort of, it, I wouldn't say artificially inflates, but if you were just to look at the general fund, you're missing a lot. And so going back to the last couple of years, I've been saying, the general fund is important. It's our primary operating fund and it's very important. However, the rest is equally important, especially when you have exact opposites into, end of the spectrum in those other funds, you have to look at the entire thing. So when you look at the total governmental funds, that's a clearer picture, although then you start looking at the different components of equity in there and it kind of gets muddled. So each individual column is important, the total column is important, but it's important to spend time and, and look through these things and really understand the different buckets and, and all of the context that, that goes into this. So again, my, my take on, on, on this is, it's, it's a healthy balance sheet, but clearly we have things to monitor and, and, you know, it's not, it's not on or off, good or bad. It's, okay, it's zero to 100, and we're better than average. But if you were just to look at the general fund, we're in the 90s somewhere, you look at them all and you're going, okay, we're in the 60, 70% range, we're good, but we got some things to, to monitor and work on as we move forward.
Got it? Anything else? Do we have any public comment on this, ma'am?
No comments.
All right. Do I have a motion to receive and file this?
I'll move to receive and file this report for Mr. White.
I'm going to first, how about a second? Okay, thank you, Councilman Woolsey. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. That moves us on to our study session number nine, Mr. Ben Matlock.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. So tonight, we're going to talk about the Freeway Corridor specific plan update and to help get some direction from City Council on which way we want to go with it. So just a bit of history, the Freeway Corridor area, the area adjacent to Interstate 10 has always been planned as meeting kind of the regional, commercial, and housing goals for the city. Ever since its original general plan in 1992, as well as the 2024 general plan, which included the following statement, capitalize on commercial and industrial opportunities along the I-10 freeway in balance with the demands of commercial development. And then the area itself had also been identified in the county-wide kind of general plan for the Ucaipa Valley area prior to city incorporation as well. And so in 2008, the City Council formally adopted the Freeway Corridor specific plan, which set aside the development of 2,400 units, open space, as well as regional commercial and business park uses. And then it also provided the space for the wastewater treatment facility that the Ucaipa Valley Water District currently has. And so it was adopted in late of 2008, and certainly, as we remember through history, a lot of things happened that changed the economic outlook. And so Freeway Corridor was meant to be a big economic boom for the city and the market conditions of which it began its preparations, it was kind of started its efforts in 2005 and then ultimately resulted in adoption in 2008. And what the market was when it was adopted and what's kind of happened since really were two different things. And so what it was intended to do and what it's been able to accomplish since then really has not paired up very well. And so when the city itself did our 2006 general plan, there was a lot more focus on the Freeway Corridor, looking at it and kind of assessing going, okay, it has not built out, it has not met the objectives of what it was meant to do. And so as part of even efforts for the general plan update through the General Plan Advisory Committee, the Account Advisory Committee, the Plan Commission, and City Council, there were a number of additional policies really added and focused on the Freeway Corridor specific plan. And then after the general plan update was adopted, the city did initiate a number of grant funding requests through different organizations to help fund an update in it, and ultimately the update began in 2021. And so tonight really is kind of building off the initial direction, as well as a number of study sessions that City Council had. And the directions that City Council provided at that time was providing flexibility for the open space requirements, really focusing on key view sheds and maintaining rural appearance were appropriate. And so leveraging certain, certain key areas as part of that rural appearance, preserving the view of the ridgeline south of Interstate 10 as well as those. preserving the view of the ridge line south of Interstate ten, as well as those along Oaklawn Road, distinguishing between the different types of open space and really leveraging both functional benefits of the natural environment mitigation areas, but also areas where open space can be provided for more like trails and other features that provide a net benefit for the residents and the community at large, whereas it's maybe not as focused on the natural setting in of itself, but providing more of the green belt and connectivity that would be desired. Certainly managing traffic impacts with whatever development ends up moving forward. And then as part of review, the discussion of proposed warehousing, since it was part of the, the land uses allowed before, was really looking to hide them. And so there was a line of sight review that was done at one of the study sessions, also focused on if they were to be built, making sure that they were hidden from the majority of public view. And then as part of the update, there was also input through a number of different property owners within the plan area. And some of this comes through some of the projects that we're going through in the process already. So we had the Transwestern project that was in process and adopted. This is now known as the Brookfield project adjacent to County Line Lane and adjacent to the City of Cal Mesa Boulevard or City of Cal Mesa jurisdiction. We also have a trekking project through the Barnett family that's adjacent to Transwestern that only has access through Seventh Place and County Line Lane. And so it's pretty limited, but it's in another kind of industrial operation located there. We also have concurrent kind of with update process that we were looking to do. We also had the Pacific Oaks Commerce Center that was looking to develop. And so it was rather than doing two separate projects and hoping somehow they met together at the end, we wanted to make sure that we designed a project that made sure that all those efforts were done because of the implications of designing one project in a vacuum to the rest of it would create a lot of different conflicts. So we were working with them. The pumpkin factory, so the pumpkin patch also had done their conditional use permit and was trying to memorialize some of their temporary structures into permanent ones and trying to maintain their operation and provide flexibility into the future as they do their annual programming. And so we wanted to make sure that we addressed what those needs were, given that the existing freeway corridor specific plan really did not accommodate them as a long-term use. It was meant kind of to be built out as something else in the future. The Ucaipa Valley Water District, they do have that waste treatment facility. It was zoned as kind of public facilities in open space. Their request was to remove it from the plan entirely, keep it as institution. That way they could go through the normal review process that they do with the city and provide that flexibility. And then also there was some land that they have through their board as the, the majority owner of the South Mountain Water Company. That area was untouched due to the future Wildwood interchange project, so that didn't change. We also did meet with the Robinson family. We actually met at their house and heard all the issues that they had with the current plan, including some of the limitations with how the open space requirements were laid out, some of the locations of the commercial districts, especially along Oaklawn Road and, and Cal Mesa Boulevard and the alignment of Cal Mesa Boulevard, making sure that those were better addressed, as well as the lack of housing ranges within it. It was either very low density or very high density, nothing in the middle. And so they did identify certain housing densities that made more sense. And then also one of the property owners, which is Abraham Isa, he has a site that's kind of tucked away, needs some infrastructure. And the way it was zoned before will never pencil out for anyone to ever bring it out there. And so we did try to work through some ideas that he had as well and some different applicants that he had talked to about something that made a little bit more practical sense for that property as well. And so that led a lot of the input for kind of the freeway quarter update. And so this was kind of the plan that was presented. Really the focus was we're going to maintain the housing unit capacity, just a nominal change of twenty-five units and kind of the overall zone capacity. The non-commercial or non-residential development did increase and really was a swap of some of the retail commercial in lieu for some of the warehousing units, but still maintaining opportunities for retail uses. And then as part of some of these switches, the overall traffic impacts would reduce compared to what was in the existing plan. So if both of them were to be built out in either scenario, the update would result in less traffic impacts than what the original plan would have called for by eighty-one thousand trips. And so this kind of gives a little bit of a comparison of the old one to kind of the new one. It was meant to follow a lot of the same philosophy, but really configured based on what the demands were and the input that we received through all those different study sessions and the input from the different property owners and the different projects that were going on at the time that we could assess into the consideration. And so ultimately, the proposed update was reviewed at the City Council meeting of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Majority of the property owners and stakeholders did provide support at that meeting for the proposed update, especially with the revisions that were identified in the RADA sheet. However, there was one property owner that remained opposed to that project. And then we also did have a number of community members that were opposed to the project, either because of the proposed warehouses for the Pacific Oaks project or just that concept of any development in particular within the area and desire for that to be more of a natural preserve or some other type of more passive type of use in the future. And so ultimately, City Council did table that item for additional work and to, to bring it back for City Council. And so really tonight, we're here to get input from you guys on which direction you guys would like us to go. We provided a number of different options in kind of assessment of the opportunities and kind of constraints with those different options as you lead us, and then we will take that direction and then ultimately move forward with that outcome. And so there are five options presented tonight. One is to keep the existing specific plan as it is. One is to proceed with the update as it was presented in September of twenty twenty-four. One is to proceed with a slight revision to that one, which we're referring to as a March twenty twenty-five plan. One is to proceed with a concept that was provided through the property owner, the Robinson property owner and their representatives. And the last one was to consider a concept, essentially a few different options where warehouses would be prohibited entirely within the plan area. And so we're going to go over kind of the benefits and issues for each of these options. And so for the first one, we'll talk about keeping the existing specific plan. Okay. So some of the benefits for those that are specifically concerned about the Pacific Oaks Commerce Center project, they would be happy because the zoning would not be available for them to build the project that they have on the site that they are looking to build it on. It is also a fairly fast process to include this effort, essentially being done in City Council to formally end the update process and kind of closing out that process and formally kind of resulting in the denial of that project. And it does result in the largest amount of natural open space area that's designated on it by the use natural open space in quotations, because it is not necessarily a fully genuine statement in terms of how the plan is actually laid out and where those open spaces are laid out as well. And so I'll kind of go into a few different themes. Now, there is a number of different issues with existing specific plan. One, business park and regional commercial, so the purple. Go back. So the purple and the red are indistinguishable in terms of what is allowed and not allowed in those districts. If you follow the lines, they are exactly the same. And they both allow for warehousing and wholesale type uses, construction services, open storage. And so both of them are allowed in either location. Brookfield warehouse is an example where an industrial project, a warehouse project of three hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet, a hundred square feet was built in the regional commercial district. And so the other regional commercial district areas, including those along Cal Mesa Boulevard or where the pumpkin patches would essentially be allowed to have warehousing uses as well, based on what is currently allowed in the existing freeway corridor specific plan. Another component as well is the general plan both calls for the update to the freeway corridor specific plan, as well as the housing element. It was state law that says if we have a number of housing units that we plan on meeting for our regional housing needs allocation, but if we go through two housing cycles and they don't happen, the state item actually says, we don't think this is a legitimate site that can actually be built. So you need to find another spot to replace these. And so in the case of that freeway quarter, we have twenty-four forty-seven units, specifically twelve hundred and eighty affordable units or high-density housing units that we would lose credit on in the plan area that we would have to accommodate likely elsewhere in the community. And so the question would eventually be, where would we like to put these? And the other component with that as well is the property owners in the plan area, we're not able to downzone those either. So you'll still have those twenty-four forty-seven units on the books for that plan area, plus what we'll have to do for the housing element and future housing cycles, you know, some number thereof. And so it does create a little bit of a challenge in that we're going to have additional housing units that we're going to be essentially adding into the city in the hopes that this doesn't come to fruition, because if it does, then we've essentially double counted housing units that we had already planned for in some way or another. And ultimately, the project, anything that does happen in the existing freeway corridor does have high costs and lengthy environmental timelines because of the environmental review and some of the permits for some of the individual projects. And it does result in a cost of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to the general funds because the existing supplemental EIR effort would not be able to be reimbursed to the other property owners because they wouldn't be able to take advantage of that effort. Now, another component, and this is where I kind of mentioned the open space designation. The plan area itself includes kind of natural open space areas and areas that such are as non-native grassland and areas that are grazed right now. So this shows open space that's meant to be protected and untouched under the existing freeway corridor specific plan. But this is areas that are that are non-native grassland and disturbed areas. And then you also have areas that are showing potential commercial development in areas that are within sensitive drainage channels and within sensitive vegetative communities. And so it's not that you can necessarily build on this easily. There's a lot of hoops to go through is, in going through the regulatory agencies. But if you look at what the plan shows and how it's mapped out, a lot of the acreage doesn't protect what should be protected and it just shows a lot of area in the green for the sake of meeting a hillside overlay ordinance number. And so it wasn't necessarily as, as beneficial, especially when we refer to some of the property owner comments, such as the Robinsons, like this corner here in the alignment of Cal Mesa Boulevard, having an open space area for non-native grasslands, when this could be a more viable spot for commercial development, was part of the additional challenges in place as well. And then as I mentioned, the pumpkin patch, they do have their conditional use permit for their use of the facility and kind of their phasing. The pumpkin patch is in the middle of a key infrastructure for the rest of the freeway corridor specific plan. And so as they're looking to do some of their permit structures, they're limited on those locations and how they can facilitate that. And then also we're still building roadways in the, the open space designation. So this is the pumpkin patch. This is the main roadway, Oak Hills Parkway, that would go through their pumpkin patch. So any structures that they would want to put here, they can't because eventually we'll have to have some sort of roadway to facilitate the rest of the development. And then you have roadway in open space as well as how the plan is currently written. And then certainly kind of one of the other key components is that it's been seen as a hub for commercial, industrial, residential growth as per the general plans and the original visions of the City Council. But it has been ineffective to me, the outcome, based on how the development has transpired so far. And ultimately, we're kind of slightly in a competition race in that the commercial land area demand has diminished, especially as online shopping has taken over a lot of the markets. So a lot of the brick and mortar stores have been replaced with e-commerce. And so when we look at regional commercial centers nearby, we're kind of sandwiched in between Beaumont and Radlins. And so there is a market to be had in between there, so City of Ucaipa and the City of Cal Mesa. But having a whole bunch of them in between the two isn't necessarily able to happen. And so as we've talked with different commercial brokers, multiple centers would not be viable. And so when you look on a bigger regional sense, this is the freeway corridor specific plan and this is Cal Mesa. And so when you look at what is happening in Cal Mesa, you have your existing Mesa Verde specific plan and the Summerwind specific plan happening, you have regional commercial opportunities in both of these locations as well. Now, another component that's happening, City of Cal Mesa has in their specific plan, their Mesa Verde, they are updating it right now. They are reducing a lot of the regional commercial in lieu of industrial uses. So they have recognized where the property owner for that project has recognized that with the regional commercial that perhaps we may want to do versus what has already been kind of set up for Cal Mesa, they don't have a market for that. And so they're going much more focused on industrial development rather than kind of traditional retail uses. And so that further kind of reinforces that the market is only so strong for one of these centers to ultimately win out. And so because of that and some of the challenges that the Summerwind project has, really the goal was to help make the Ucaipa the number one choice for the sales tax generating use. So we would be the sales hub for kind of what is left in the region. And we were able to capture it and then really focusing on the discussion we've had with commercial developers and brokers to help guide the comparison and look for ways that we could be the competitive choice, especially compared to the timelines that are involved with Summerwind in the City of Cal Mesa. Now, option number two is what was presented in September twenty twenty-four. And so this is kind of a land use map exhibit showing those, those updates. Now, this is again more of a evolution of the original plan. So a lot of the high-level goals and policies that were identified in the original freeway corridor specific plan are carried over, as well as the, the direction from the City Council in their prior study sessions. And it also includes input that we receive from those property owners, as well as the challenges that they identified in their original adopted plan, while addressing the need for where the market has gone and creating flexibility for it and facilitates more fiscal sustainability, has more commercial activity. You know, it provides more commercial activity and also provides for, you know, development that has not kept pace with our infrastructure, as we talked about development impact fees. We paid for a lot of infrastructure so far, but the development has not reimbursed the development impact fee. And so this is to help facilitate that as well. But certainly also looking at key ridge lines and view sheds to help kind of protect and maintain the appearance where we are. Also leveraging, you know, through the support from the majority of the property owners and the RADA sheet, it would include all those components and clarifications. The RADA sheet really had minor modifications and clarifications to help kind of address any questions, as well as future interpretations, recognizing that all of us may not be here in the future. And so whatever staff is in place can also understand what was meant to be taken. And then certainly, as I mentioned, warehouses being hidden from view in that stowaway treatment plant. So this is the elevation of the freeway and this is the dash line. So when you're looking at it, your line of sight from the freeway to the warehousing is completely blocked. And then using the Pacific Oaks project to bring the infrastructure to support the rest of the development, the freeway retail commercial development that would occur. And then some of it was also providing a much greater mix of opportunities than what was in it. So we have a diversity of industries, so agro-commercial with the pumpkin patch, providing their long-term sustainability and support for how their operation is and allowing them to provide more sales tax revenue opportunities on behalf of the city, providing the standard retail uses and being kind of that bid box, kind of hub for the region, providing mixed-use development within the plan area as well, so allowing more small storefronts mixed in with housing. And then also leveraging the demand for a warehouse and industrial, but also restricting it to areas within the plan. Then also providing a mix of housing to meet the free market. As I mentioned, the plan was either low-density housing, some apartments, or very high-density housing. It had nothing really in between that range. And so the goal was to really capture that flexibility and make sure that we're targeting where the market truly is at to perform and accommodate what the demands are of, of future residents. And then again, traffic would be reduced from what was in the existing plan. The Pacific Oaks project itself would also expedite the general fund loan for the development impact fee program. As per the analysis, sixty different general plan policies are supported by the update. And then there is no additional long-term cost to the general fund with the update as well. Now, the cons, certainly, there is plan opposition to it. The largest property owner does oppose the option for option two. Residents do have the concerns with warehouses uses or as well as development in general throughout the area. And then there has been a number of resident concerns about losing opportunities for retail development. And so the reduction of regional commercial in lieu of the business park, having that loss of acreage was also a concern. And then the reduction of just the total net commercial acreage, especially on the area north of I-ten freeway, was another concern. And then it does require a thirty thousand dollar approximately amendment to the consultant contract, but that would be reimbursed by the developers within the plan area. Now, there's another kind of version, which is more of a revised version from what you guys saw. And this is what we're referring to as a March twenty twenty-five version. And so really the difference here is it follows all the different stuff from the old plan. It clarifies a little bit more of the mixed-use development standards within this area. It identifies kind of the, the total residential area, but provides open space standards within this area. And then it shows a greater footprint for commercial development along. And then it shows a greater footprint for commercial development along here. The EIR did assess the grading and impacts to this area already, and so it's just showing that the acreage is more accessible, but the net capacity for commercial development was already analyzed. And so there's not significant changes as a whole to it, but it does make it the land more marketable and gives a lot more flexibility for all the different property owners. And so again, the benefits then would be all those benefits shown for option two, and it considers the rata sheet to enhance what was done in option two, but by providing a little bit more deliberate standards and objective standards for the housing project reviews, providing a little bit more space available for commercial development along the north side of Interstate 10. And this also does not include any additional long-term cost to the general fund. And so again, there's still some public opposition. A lot of the cons still remain the same. Residents are concerned with any type of warehouse land use in the city, and some residents still have concerns with development within the freeway corridor specific plan area. The property owner that was opposed to the freeway corridor specific plan update remains opposed to this version as well. I do want to note in both options two and three that property owner threw the no-net housing law requirements, so we can't remove housing law or units from the plan area. So because of the Pacific industrial projects, we have to offset it within the plan area. By doing so, they picked up Sit Center and 20 housing units in their properties, so they get a net benefit of Sit Center and 20 housing units. The EIR assessed a commercial capacity of 1.1 million square feet of retail. That's equivalent to a Victoria Gardens or a Mountain Grove and Citrus Plaza combined in terms of scale. So for frame reference, the type of commercial development that could be built in the plan area is still a substantial amount of retail, commercial. And so when we're looking at the loss of sales tax opportunities and what the market could bear, there's still a large amount of opportunities for them to capture that and still provide sales tax revenue. And then as part of the overall area, they do get a 150% increase in their commercial zoned area in that plan area as well. So they get the net benefits of Sit Center and 20 housing units and 150% increase in zone commercial land in the entire plan area. And it does require amendment to their contract from the consultants for the SEIR in $50,000. Again, would be reimbursed by the developers as they build projects in the city. And then, now, we do receive a concept from, or I guess two concepts from the property owner of the Robinsons and their representative. We did reference both of them in staff report. We provide the analysis of the more significant one. The other one is a combination or hybrid between option three and four without any open space but additional warehousing, but I'll go into option four here. And so showing it, they showed the changes for their land. So as you can see, there's no open space features shown on theirs. Additional warehousing space added in to their properties, and then certainly some substantial changes along that, plus high-density housing along the periphery. And then the other version that they had still had additional warehousing, and then some of the mixed-use development along here, and then but still loss of open space features. Now, benefit here is this would satisfy that property owner, since this is the version that they did provide. But certainly, as part of the issues, it is expensive. The whole freeway corridor specific plan process pretty much has to go from the beginning. We have to reassess all the infrastructure that goes into it because of the scale of development that would be added in would be quite substantial. And the future development costs grading into, you know, the natural areas and doing culverts and all the permitting and all that stuff is not a cheap effort and also still subject to whether or not regulatory agency would allow it in the first place. But certainly, a very expensive proposition of infrastructure for the city. And then certainly, the last part, when we talked about the race for the development, the timeline, since we're competing against our neighboring city, is if we're going from, starting from scratch, going back through a brand-new EIR process, and then also going through the regulatory permitting and hoping that agencies will approve it, Calamaesa will beat us to the punch without any, any sort of issue. And then ultimately, the housing and demand for commercial is limited. There's only so much critical mass for where the market can bear, and so we do need to keep that in mind as well. And then just a few different issues that we were kind of set of. One is if we're trying to maintain key ridge lines and viewed corridors for our rural character and open space, those are not proposed within the plan area. We also have a number of general plan goals and policies that are related to similar effects that would also be, need to be revised in order to provide general plan consistency. As part of the habitat wildlife movements, and this is within a drainage channel, as part of our wildlife movement identified in our general plan, that would also be impacted as well. Because of the warehousing units that would take access through Canal Line Road, City of Calamaesa, that connection point, which would be in a different spot than where the existing warehouse is, would require the City of Calamaesa to also designate that section as a commercial truck route. Right now, it's a residential street. It's not set up that way. Pursuant to updated state law, AB 98, they would need to do that. So we'd be waiting on Calamaesa to allow us to count truck traffic along that roadway as part of that project approval. And then again, the traffic increases would be increased to all other options, both in the more intense commercial option that was shown, as well as the kind of hybrid between the city's version and this version as well. And then again, the high-intensity version only limits development to high-density housing. And then we would essentially start all over, so we'd have to redo the freeway corridor specific plan, as well as the EIR estimate is approximately $1 million or $1,150,000, $1,1,500. We would also have to have a discussion about how that cost would be split, since this would essentially be a brand-new effort, an expensive effort to benefit the needs of only one particular property owner, given that the rest were in support of the plan as it was before. And so that would be another thing. And then some of the other things I do want to talk about as well. They did show a change of rezoning to where the Future Wildwood Interchange Project is. One of the things that we cannot do right now, because we are doing the EIR review for the interchange project, is modify that existing designation that changes the value of what that piece of property is. So the concept being that if the city were to downsize on that piece of property, knowing that we might acquire it later, they would asset or assume that we were trying to inverse condemn it and make it worth less than what it was worth. Conversely, if we upzone it, it means that when we go and try to buy it, we've already increased the value or made that property more valuable for the sole benefit of that property owner. And essentially, the taxpayers are paying more for a piece of property that we knew we were going to buy potentially in the first place. And so both of those are issues. And then certainly, if those are concerned about warehouses, this would increase the number of warehouses. Originally, the concept was, since the original freeway corridor had two sites that could facilitate two large warehouses, we would only keep two in the entire plan anyways and still maintain that restriction. And then that way, we could focus more on the retail uses and other activities with it in the city. And so that was, I'll go back real quick. Okay, I'll just, you can go. And then option five is trying to consider freeway corridor specific plan concept without any warehouses. So there's kind of two different paths to go down. One is just to amend the adopted freeway corridor to prohibit warehouses, or two, amend either options two or three to just remove the business park areas and then replace it with housing, so some other equivalent value within that plan area. And this provides support to those that were opposed to either the specific Pacific Oaks industrial project or just warehouses in general. And again, it supports those interests of the residents that are opposed to the warehouse uses in the freeway corridor specific plan area. There are still a number of different kind of challenges within it. If we look at the existing freeway corridor, a lot of the issues with option one still remain in terms of the housing, the infrastructure, all those costs. But there's also concern that the property owners would see that as kind of losing more land use rights overall, reduction of the develop, the ability to develop their land and the impacts to the economic growth, and then certainly, high costs for the CQ review for the individual projects later on, and so the potential legal costs. Or if we amend option two and three, we are increasing the city's population at buildout. We are reducing some of the sales tax revenue that would come from commercial development with those that require additional service costs associated with housing. We would generate higher traffic, especially during peak hour times because of the residential units would add more traffic overall. And then we would still have additional costs for environmental review, depending on what the ultimate buildout kind of numbers are proposed on it. And so we kind of created a table just to help kind of simplify kind of the different options for council to consider. The cost to update the CQ respectively towards the general fund, the overall fiscal outcome for the long term to the city in terms of property tax, sales tax, and just all those kind of different revenue sources, the visibility of warehouses, what you would likely see in those development scenarios, the type of open space area, so not just looking at the acreage number in total, which would be like option number one, but really, what is the benefit that the community is actually getting from the open space? The type of housing mix that we are getting, and then some of the key issues. And so as part of that review, option three does hit the highlights the best. And so with that, that is kind of staff's recommendation, but we are happy to facilitate the discussion, answering your questions, and get input from you guys, as well as members of the public on this item, so.
Thank you, Ben. That's a lot of info.
To give Ben a little break, I'd like to call up Callie Binks, the Ucaipa-Calamaesa Joint Unified School District Superintendent.
Chief, Mr. Rousen, Dan, Indian Call, that's Rousen Canyon. Do you have the, okay, she's got the pointer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. Thank you for allowing us to just speak on what you're deciding this evening. I have with me Lance Bradley, who's our Public Information Officer and extraordinaire. And so we just have some information, because often when the cities are concerning, considering different projects that might include housing, we get asked, do we have room in our schools? And I get those calls pretty frequently, at least three or four a month, by different people in the community. Sometimes developers are looking to see what they can do in the communities. And so we wanted to give you something official that you could refer to so that you have the answers from us. So we have, we have a few slides. Just a reminder of our enrollment at this time is 8,000 plus. We have about 1,000 employees, and we have 14 schools. And Lance is going to talk a little bit specifically about the impact and the capacity of each one of our schools. So this will be a document that you can use. I do want to say that the people that think our schools are full are often the people who are working in them. And the reason for that is, because being a teacher myself, we can occupy any space that's available for anything. And so a single room may be housing a chess club after school, but not be being used during the day. I mean, there's just all kinds of opportunities that we take advantage of, just kind of like my husband tells me, I spread out in the extra bedrooms and then want a bigger house. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a great thing because everybody in our, in our school district plans to use space well, but we're here to show you what the schools were built for and what the capacity is and what it was intended for.
All right. Thanks, boss. Good evening. So there's five slides, because there's going to be five schools that'll be directly impacted by, by the new units. It's Valley Elementary, Dunlap Elementary, Parkview, Mesa View Middle School, and then Ucaipa High School. And so what we anticipate from really any development right now is we anticipate to get .3 to .7 students per home, and just based off the freeway corridor specific plan, that comes out to around 700 to maybe 1,400 students. And each of these slides pretty much say that, and then they also say there's going to be an increase to traffic, which makes sense. There's more people on campus, there's more traffic. But, but really, the highlight here is the capacity of our schools. So if you look at Dunlap Elementary, we have, you know, 368 students right now, and we can fit 775. And that's, you know, so we're at half-capacity. We have the ability to take more students. Like Callie said, that's always the number one question when an apartment building goes up, even when a home goes up, can you fit more kids? And we definitely, you know, over the last 20 years, we've lost around 1,400 students, just due to various reasons which Callie will go through. And so we just wanted to include these slides so that you're aware and the public is aware that each of these schools, we can, we can take more kids, and we gladly would. And, and you know, there's the other question that we'll, we'll get at the end, I'm sure, is are there teachers out there? Because there's all this media coverage about teacher shortages. But the Commission on Teacher Credentialing saw an increase of 18.5%, I think is what it was this last year. So the people are out there waiting to be hired, and the schools are waiting for kids to come in. So I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on each of these, but they'll show you the rough location of where the school's at in reference to the plan. And then same information, the .3 to .7 students, the enrollment we have right now, the amount of employees we have, and then what our actual full capacity is. And you'll find that our full capacity is much higher at each of these schools than what we're actually utilizing it for currently. And it may be weird that Mesa View's on here and that Parkview's on here, but, you know, Dunlap and Valley are feeder schools to both of those middle schools. And so if kids are going into those schools, then they're eventually going to go to Mesa View, they're eventually going to go to Parkview, they're eventually going to go to Ucaipa So I'll hand it back to my lovely boss to talk about declining enrollment.
That's not what he said about me today. No, I'm just kidding. He was actually out today. He's here just for this. We have been declining enrollment, and the whole state of California has been declining in enrollment. So the birth rate has been lower than it has been in past years. We are seeing an uptick with the governor's introduction of transitional kindergarten, which is a TK classroom, that's what we call it, and that includes our kids that would, are not age-eligible for kindergarten, so we get them at four years old. And so that has become a new grade level for us, and so we have got an uptick in that. But even with that, we still are at the enrollment that is depicted on the slides. And so there's, there's a number of reasons. There's, you know, been a growth in homeschooling, also in charter schools. That's taken some of the district's enrollment over the years. And as we look ahead, we're looking at some dips that you'll see in our projected enrollment. So for instance, there's like a wave that'll go up to the high school that will be a smaller batch of kids. And as we, we work through that, you know, it impacts our staffing. And one thing I would say is a lot of our, a lot of our teachers and our classified employees, they live here. And so I get questions a lot from our high school students and our new employees as they, you know, join our team about, you know, they want to live in our community. And so while we encourage building for our student population, we also encourage it for our families and our students that have graduated and want to give back to the community so that they can stay here. Just a little bit about our demographics, because they have changed, and we want to make sure that the council has a lot of information as you go into making your decisions. But our foster youth, our homeless students, and I think, as you know, we have Family Promise, which is our nonprofit that we use to help support keeping our students in our district when they are experiencing homelessness, and we provide support for them as the nonprofit. And then our number of socioeconomic disadvantaged students has increased quite a bit. So that gives you a little bit of information, and if there was a need for more of what that exactly means, we could share that with you in separate cover and give to your city With that, we, we tried to answer, Lance tried to answer any questions that he thought you might have in anticipation, but if there's anything that you need from us, we would be happy to get it to you under separate cover for you to consider and then answer any questions you might have tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Quirk, I presume we have a plethora of comment?
We have 18 public comments.
All right. Well, let's do that, and then we'll have our discussion after all that.
Okay, sounds good. We'll start with Kathy Sellers, followed by Ed Timmons.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Thorpe, Kathy Sellers, District 1. I strongly support option one and disagree with makeup warehouses in Ucaipa. Is there really a cost benefit for warehouses in order to give up the potential for quality retail and that tax base? It's been in the headlines lately that California is the fourth-largest economy in the world. The inland empire- The inland empire is a powerhouse. Several neighboring cities have voted no on warehouses recently. It's my understanding that two years were spent on the freeway corridor specific plan committee that represented diverse interests and input from landowners, nearby residents, and others who have an interest in the long-term development of this site. The new plan is not consistent with the specific plan nor the major goals of the general plan. If that was a city goal in 2008, did the council change that goal without telling us? Can you clearly articulate what goal you have now adopted that is currently guiding your decisions? Shouldn't those goals reflect the desires of the community? As Councilman Beaver made mention of recently, we have engaged citizens who can step up and be involved in formulating a plan that will address all of the issues. There's a wealth of innovative minds with a vast array of experience in this room tonight to tap into. If I can be so bold as to quote Pope Francis, "We need to build bridges, not walls." Growth for the sake of growth is the ideology of the cancer cell. Thank you.
Ed Timmons, followed by Leola Green.
Edward Timmons, District Three. Imagine as many of us here can, those exhilarating childhood moments when we first ventured into the wild unknown. Whether it was a sprawling forest, a shimmering watershed, a vast desert, or a secret corner of some private land. Picture yourself as a kid again, heart racing with the thrill of make believe, chasing adventure through uncharted realms. Whether with friends or in the quiet wonder of your own company. Those awe-filled explorations, brimming with discovery and boundless imagination forged the very core of who we are today. As a child, I rarely ventured into the wild, spending most of my days indoors. My first camping trip wasn't until I was 17. For me, adventure was fleeting, glimpsed through a car window as the world rushed by. The disconnection of children from the outdoors is what we call the nature or adventure gap. If you ever meet my two incredible daughters, you will instantly notice their boundless sense of adventure. Da-da ensures that we are always prepared to have another adventure. Embarking on thrilling escapades, giving them the wild, wonder-filled childhood experiences that I missed out on. My wife, who is a child development expert, will tell you children who lack access to nature lose out on social, cognitive, physical, and emotional development. A 2020 study showed that these children had lower self-regulation and higher stress levels, partially due to limited green space access. All of that to say, I recognize that you, the council, and City Hall staff have a tough job, a tough job finding innovative solutions to solve our social and economic needs. Deloitte consultants define innovating as identifying the problems that matter and move through them systematically to deliver elegant solutions. You turn complexity into simplicity. Building million-square-foot warehouses, in my opinion, is not innovative. That's not how we transition from the bedroom community that we are to the mid-sized city that we, we really are. My, my recommendation is some real innovation. Thank you.
My family moved to this city 29 years ago. We came here to get away from the cabin fever. My family saw this city as their retirement city. Why is this council not saying no to Caltrans and the warehouse and the developers? Why, as your previous council members keep saying yes to the council, be the council to say no, especially when the homeowners of these properties are raising beautiful things on the land? This city has to live within four days of no power. Don't put us in a position where we would have to live without power for a week or more. Did anyone think of the nursing homes we have in this city? I have an oxygen-dependent person in my home. The mental anguish that she suffered was beyond words. When our power goes out, the previous quote was for six, which caused a strain. Now the current time has become, you can count on eight to 12 hours. This city is an elderly community first and foremost. You don't want to be the council to fail, then don't be. What you do here also affects other cities in the area. Don't make this city another LA mentality in which it seems to be already headed that way. So stop the LA mentality before you get so far that there's no going back. This land could help the regional park with big events. We didn't come to this city to live in a concrete jungle. Be our council to say no.
Maria Korn, followed by Linda Witham.
Good evening. I live in District Five. Ucaipa is such a beautiful city. We have such beautiful views, the mountains and the hills and the valley. I've lived here for over 70 years, and I hate to see the blight of a warehouse brought in. It's, it does not fit in Ucaipa. I hope that you see that. And also, I'd like to know, we are always told to take, to take short showers and to not water our gardens. Where are we going to get all the water for these projects?
Linda Witham, followed by David Matuzak.
Good evening. Linda Witham, 35449 Balsa Street, District One. After studying both, or after studying the freeway corridor development plans, I opt definitely for one. The other four, I find cookie cutter and unimaginative, throwing in warehouses. I, I also am of the opinion that the original plan better reflects what Ucaipa represents, but also provides the best long-term revenue stream. We are unique in the inland empire. We are not Fontana or Bloomington. Nor do we want to be. The newest version of the freeway corridor plan would make us just another truck stop on the 10 freeway. It does not provide a long-term revenue stream and robs the beauty of our area. I am vehemently opposed to mega warehouses in Ucaipa.
Mayor and council members. My name is David Matuzak. I'm a resident of Live Oak Canyon for more than 40 years. I am the president of the Friends of Live Oak Canyon Homeowners Association, also the founder and coordinator of the Live Oak Canyon Firewise Community. I'd first like to thank the financial report, for the financial report today. It was very, very detailed. I haven't had that much fun since my freshman year in high school algebra. And I did learn in algebra and math somewhere that sometimes the math doesn't add up, and I know a shell game when I see it. And it's interesting how really well-hidden the financial difficulties of this city are. And that brings us to the need for revenue in the form of warehouses. I'd also like to thank the planner for a very, very well-thought-out and a very nice presentation. I did find it interesting, and I think the council should question why he met with the developers, particularly the Robinsons. There are three primary developers, the Robinsons, the Palmers with the Pacific Oaks Project, and Mr. Issa. I find it rather interesting that he met personally with the developers, who all three of them are absentee landowners. Yet he neglected to meet with a single resident of Live Oak Canyon, those people who are most affected by this project. So on our September 23 meeting, you got an earful about warehouses. That resulted, as you know, in a recall here. One of the council members was successfully recalled, one nearly recalled. It's very clear to you, City Council members, how your constituents feel about warehouses. So when you look at these five plans, if I understand it correctly, there's only one of them, that's option five, that has no warehouses. Your constituents will rise up in a huge way if you consider any warehouse development anywhere in Ucaipa. It's enough, the inland empire has had enough of warehouses, and it's time to put a stop to it completely, right here in Ucaipa. Thank you very much.
Gilbert Turnquist, followed by Holly Warner.
Honorable and esteemed mayor and council members, and honorable and esteemed audience, those of you that are here tonight, hopefully to reject any option but option one. Let me begin. For agenda number nine, I'm going to outline nine bullet points, okay? I want to speak to you about how important it is to reject the freeway corridor specific plan under the Pacific Oaks Commerce Center project, which is basically warehouses. This proposed project will include more than 200 million square feet of warehouse space, more than 1,000 parking stalls, and hundreds of docking bays, all directly impacting our neighborhoods, our health, and our way of life. I am sure all of you agree upon the fact that Ucaipa's community character and is ensuring smart, sustainable growth. This project would do just the opposite, as I'm sure you know. It invites heavy industrialization, floods our streets with diesel trucks, worsens our traffic, pollutes our air, and endangers public health. The environmental impact report that was generated earlier acknowledges that serious impacts to air quality and traffic cannot be fully mitigated. Diesel emissions, as we know, causes cancer, asthma, cardiovascular disease, et cetera. Our residents, especially children and seniors, deserve better, don't you think, seeing our population is composed, or started at least, as the senior citizen community? Okay? Ucaipa's general plan promises to preserve open space, protect the environment, promote reasonable development. This project apparently betrays those promises, don't you agree? Okay? Now, number three, there is a giant new vacant warehouse off Cherry Valley Boulevard and another one at County Line Road. They're empty. Why do you think we need more warehouses seeing we already have empty warehouse spaces? Okay? Number four, Trump is bringing back jobs and businesses. Consequently, there will be even more vacant warehouses everywhere. One can read this easily by checking the news, you know, newspapers, TV, whatever you might want to do. Number five, if in fact the warehouse scheme were to be developed, we're going to have to need maybe a six-lane cloverleaf at, what is it, exit 84 or 85? The Live Oak Canyon exit and Oak Grove Drive? Not, Live Oak Canyon and Oak Grove, Oak Grove, no, what is it? Oak Glen, Oak Glen, okay? I'm sorry. And who's, and then we're going to have to have a widening freeway system, maybe about six lanes. Looks like I'm cut off. Anyway, I, I've got other things to say, but I understand I'm out of time. Thank you so much.
Holly Warner, followed by DeeDee Chudi.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I think, I think why you're seeing so many people here today, because really what we're talking about here is the identity of Ucaipa, and I think that's why so many people are concerned about this particular project. But I think a lot of people are already talking about that, so I'm not going to. I think whichever option you choose tonight, you should be looking at what's a net positive for Ucaipa in terms of our quality of life, in terms of city revenue, kind of looking at the whole package. And that includes current residents as well as, we're going to have new residents in all these houses. So looking at quality of life. To that, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about all of these from a different angle. I'm concerned about traffic. So in the general plan update, there were numerous intersections, including at the freeway, that were identified as Level of Service, LOS ratings of C, D, E, and F. And that's without all of this development. So I want to see how these impacts are going to get mitigated throughout town, especially as Ms. Banks just said, we're going to have people driving their kids from the opposite side of the 10 all the way up to Parkview twice a day, you know, there and back, and up to Mesa View. That's going to impact all of the intersections throughout the town, ones that are already really bad. Like, there's four schools, right where Parkview is, that are all getting in at the same time. And heaven forbid you have to drive through at 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning. It's getting pretty bad there. We need to have a plan for how we're going to address this additional traffic throughout the town, whichever option you choose tonight. My concern was looking at the EIR in section 5.17. All of the original mitigation measures for traffic have been struck through. So I'm not, I'm not seeing how we're going to address that. That's number one. Number two, we're talking a lot about the Wildwood interchange, which is good. It's obviously agreed, we need it, we need more on-ramps and off-ramps. But that project isn't approved yet. It's not underway. We could be talking 10, 15 years. The concern is with this, they're going to be able to build houses faster than that, and we're going to have a Highland Springs fiasco at Oakland and Ucaipa Boulevard on-ramps. We're going to have, put the cart before the horse, really. I think we need to have that freeway interchange further along before we're building on the other side of it. I think that's just going to add to our problems. Because you're going to have people on the opposite side of the freeway then trying to go one way or the other to get around to get back into Ucaipa. And they're going to be, they're Ucaipa residents, so they're going to be coming here not only for schools, but for our grocery stores and everything else. And I think we need to take that into consideration with whatever option you choose tonight. Thank you.
DeeDee Chudi, followed by Lloyd Rextad.
Good evening, Council. DeeDee Chudi, Ucaipa Valley Conservancy President. We've worked hard with Ucaipa through the years. We've brought you Wildwood Canyon State Park, we gave you the land for the El Dorado, and we now have helped you purchase the Five Winds Ranch. And we are very much concerned about the direction Ucaipa goes. It is a beautiful town. It has unique things that you can't find in Southern California. We're close to the mountains, to recreation, and these parks have helped make it even better. We were very disappointed when we changed the general pan on the north bench, went from rural living to now clustered houses. And we are concerned also about what happens as you come into Ucaipa. The traffic, like she said, is pretty hard when you try to go through that time of day. This corridor, the warehouses, you have lots of options. We just hope you won't go against your predecessors and the ones who've planned these out, and you will look closely and think what's best for Ucaipa. Don't make us part of Southern California the way it's grown. Let us be unique and different like we are.
Lloyd Rextad, followed by Carla McCorkle.
Hi. I just want to address the issue of approving option one. I think that that's the direction we should go. I think considering- I think considering warehouses is totally not consistent with the the way Ucaipa sees itself as a community. And I know that, I've heard developers tell me and tell groups that I've been in, that visually and aesthetically, the warehouses, you won't even notice them. Well, I'm not concerned about the aesthetics. I'm concerned about the pollution, about the traffic, about the diesel emissions that are going to come with all this. And with everything you've been hearing from everyone else, I just want to repeat, we need to just have responsible, balanced development in our community, which will hopefully bring in retail establishments that would be productive and profitable for the city of Ucaipa and no warehouses. Thank you.
Carla McCorkle, followed by Christine Muller.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. In recent discussions, several concerns have been raised regarding the city's budget deficit, public safety cuts, a proposal to add mega warehouses to the freeway corridor specific plan, as well as a plan to reduce the acreage for regional commercial businesses. Additionally, the prior city council and the city manager promoted a 1% sales tax increase to address the growing budget deficit, which the citizens of Ucaipa approved in November of 2024. However, I believe the effectiveness of this 1% sales tax increase relies upon the city's expansion of commercial businesses, which could also generate additional revenue from business licenses and other local fees. As I am sure you are aware, the 2008 freeway corridor specific plan includes 172 acres for regional commercial development. So when you reduce the commercial area by 100 acres, it will reduce the tax revenue that we need to offset our growing budget deficit. I also don't agree that businesses are not interested in coming to Ucaipa. I mean, look at what is going on at the Ucaipa Point development. I am confident that this city council, the interim city manager, and city staff can figure out how to replicate what is going on in that area of the I-10 corridor. While adding warehouses may provide some benefit, I believe their primary contribution to the revenue generated is going to be through property taxes and not sales tax. This would be a major mistake, as the sales tax revenue is crucial for addressing our growing budget deficit. So I'd ask you to think hard about whether mega warehouses will actually support the city's long-term financial needs. Finally, I do understand there is a concern with building residential units and meeting the state's requirements. I for one, am not opposed to modifying the residential zoning in the 2008 freeway corridor specific plan. I would ask this council to explore any and all mixed-use housing options, particularly workforce housing, for employees who will contribute to the regional commercial sector. In conclusion, number one, maintain the regional commercial acreage as in in option one. Promote a mix of commercial, professional, and residential development to create a balanced and sustainable economic environment. Number three, invest in workforce housing. And number four, no mega warehouses. Thank you.
Christine Muller, followed by Colleen Wong.
Thank you for hearing me out. You know, I was on the original freeway corridor committee. And I would really like to say that I don't concur with the way that it was presented. And with all due respect, Ben, I think you did a little bit of a disservice to the committee. Because we knew what we were doing. We were there, we studied. We were educated on what the purpose of the freeway specific corridor. Nobody is opposed to building. And I think that that was a typical thing up there, that people were opposed to building. Building has to occur. And everybody realizes that. In that building, I mean currently in the city of Ucaipa, there's about 56,000 people. At build-out, there's going to be about 80,000. 2,400 homes are going to be up there, and there's going to be an average of four people in each of those homes, which means 9,600 people are going to be here. That's a third, that's over a third of the build-out for the rest of the community. That is not what we intend for those people coming into Ucaipa to live in. So, you know, it's different when people build on the corridor. It's different when it's built within residential and housing. To, you know, Calamasa has a plan. I'm a real estate broker. I lost a deal on a beautiful house. It was only three and a half years old with this killer view out to the west. And it was because of Calamasa's plan. And what we're not talking about is the plan and the roundabout that's coming on a county line road. We know that they're going to improve the on-ramps and off-ramps on county line roads with roundabouts. So if there's all of this warehouses, if there's a warehouse already existing in Cherry Valley, there's warehouses existing on County Line Road, do you really think they're going to use the roundabouts on County Line Road? Or do you think they're going to use the surface streets like the people do in Conchella's happening? Even with the pumpkin patch going on, we still are affected by the people trafficking in that area. It's not built for that. And Holly was right. Highland Springs, how many trucks do you think Highland Springs can accommodate? That off-ramp, on-ramp? How many trucks do you think can be accommodated on County Line Road or on Oak Glen Road? There's going to be, you know, almost over 5,000 cars, and that's at a minimum. So I think that Ucaipa's land is like low-lying fruit. It's easier for, it's easy for developers to come in here and try to buy it. And that's our lowest return on land. It's not a good idea. We knew what we were doing. Option one is the way to go.
Colleen Wong, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Hey, council. From District One. When you compare the original freeway plan with the current proposals, it seems clear which is better for our city. The original plan allows for far more tax revenue income generation. That's what we need in this city. No mega warehouses are needed or wanted, it seems like to me. Perhaps some property owner has assured you differently, but without concrete proof of revenue income generation, even the design of the proposed mega warehouse is not for a point-of-sale warehouse. Therefore, it would be irresponsible, it seems, to approve it, something of that size. It seems to me that it is not unreasonable for densifying to densify the housing there, in that area. It seems like workhouse housing is reasonable. That doesn't seem unreasonable to me. But warehouses, mega warehouses, seems completely unreasonable for our area. And I oppose it completely.
Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Meredith Sherwin.
I need to be later on the speaking, because everyone else can say everything, and I don't have to say as much. So, there's a lot been said already. Just going back to the original group that looked at it. There were landowners, there were city planners, and there were community voices that spoke to the balance of commercial and light industry and residential. In addition, some of the areas that they're removing from option one includes public land. At one time, there included some school land as well, and other public lands. And also, this plan decreases in half the open space, for those of you who care about open space. So, I'll leave it at that for the different plans. Looking at the finances, though, is a little more important to me. It's sort of like somebody that puts honey in a trap, and you go in the trap, and then you find out, well, I have no place to go. I got my honey, and it's gone. I think you need to look at the financial aspects of what you're getting on each of the options now, what you'll have a year from now, five years from now, 20 years from now. Because in the long run, if the toll doesn't add up to give the city enough revenue, you're going to put us in a greater hole than we're supposedly in right now. So I think it's very important that you don't just say, we're going to get this lump sum now, but what's going to happen in the future? So you need to look at what the residential's going to bring in, the commercial, and the warehouses in each one of the different options. The one thing I do know a little more about has to do with the environment, health-wise. So, they look at plan two and three, and they say, okay, by having the warehouse, we decrease the traffic. But we actually increase the pollution by under the five that air quality people allow us to. Since it's one of the worst areas, and if we increase it by even three or four, what does that say about your care for the health of people? And supposedly, traffic can be mitigated easier than lungs. Thank you.
Meredith Sherwin, followed by Craig Heaps.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Meredith Sherwin, and my husband and I moved here 33 years ago. In 1992, we were looking for a place to buy our first home. And both of us working at Loma Linda University Medical Center, my husband a physician and myself a nurse, we would take 24-hour emergency call. And the limit on our call would be a 30-minute drive. We needed to be with, we needed to respond to the call and be in the hospital dressed and ready within 30 minutes. And so, we in 1992 drove our car and thought out, what is the radius from Loma Linda that we can find the most beautiful place to live? The most beautiful, green, good-for-a-family, not, you know, not anything that would be dangerous for a family, and just beautiful. And guess where we found? Most beautiful city here in Ucaipa. And so we moved here in 1992, and we have been so grateful for this city. We love it. And we continue still to work at Loma Linda. And what we are concerned about, of course, is, you know, the traffic, the environmental impact of the smog, of the idling engines of trucks that may sometime fill up a warehouse that some are sitting empty that we see. All of that going on is, you know, a strain on the community as far as health, and of course, the increase of traffic and the wear and tear. But I have always been so proud of Ucaipa when I've seen the ugly, eyesore warehouses that I've seen pop up in Cherry Valley, Calamasa, Beaumont, Banning, along Redlands, all along. And I think, wow, how beautiful coming up the Ucaipa grade and coming into Ucaipa. I've seen the explosion at the bottom of Ucaipa Boulevard. We used to just have bakers. But now we've got a lot, so I know there's a lot of good revenue coming in there. I just have been so proud of Ucaipa for how much we have kept the beautiful, serene, gorgeous green hillsides. And I would love to keep it that way. And by also seeing that we want to be this gateway, we have always been this gateway to the most beautiful mountains in all of Southern California. We are not just that one more dot of concrete jungle leading towards Palm Springs. It just seems like that's all I'm seeing. But when I come through Ucaipa, the beauty and the gorgeousness of the black cows on the green hillsides, I just think we are a jewel of the inland empire. I really hope we can keep it as much as possible. I'm super grateful for the opportunity to be here and to have lived 33 years, enjoying how beautiful it is. I want to remind you that there are many millions of ways to make revenue. But what we have right now is the beauty of our community, the gorgeousness of the land. Once we've lost that, no amount of money can get it back. Thank you so much, thank you.
Craig Heaps, followed by Kevin Miskin.
Craig Heaps, 543 West County Line Road. Honorable mayor, council members, good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm up here speaking on behalf of the Robinsons Properties, the Robinson Family Trust, Ken and Sandy Robinson and their family, Robinson and their family. I want to point out, I keep hearing about this one property owner that's opposed, and the one property owner, and let's not forget that property owner owns about 55% of the land in the freeway corridor specific plan. It's not a single property owner, a single property. They own 653 acres or so of land. As a matter of fact, they have 11,000 feet of freeway frontage there in the freeway corridor specific plan. So, on their behalf, we've submitted a plan, a couple of different plans. You saw one variation tonight. The other one I emailed to you, I hope that you received it and have a chance to look at it. The concern with options two and three, I mean, if option one stays, option one stays, that seems to be the consensus of the community. But with options two and three, there's a lot of open space that's unnecessary. And it seems to me that part of the reason for that is the off-ramp is planned, which I know is 20, 25 years away, it's quite some time away. But Wildwood Canyon, also possible roads through the property to get the trucks from the warehouse, or the property, the houses being built in Calamasa through to the Wildwood Canyon exit. And it just sets up an eminent domain-type situation, devaluing the property along the freeway frontage, land that needs to be used for the freeways, I mean, for the commercial development. And it sets up an inverse condemnation situation, which is covered by the Fifth Amendment. So, I think it's very important to really look at the plan that has been presented, that you have in your emails. This isn't just about warehouses. This plan that I sent you covers housing, because I know it's important. The one thing plan one doesn't do, option one, it doesn't preserve the housing element, and that creates a problem in Sacramento. So we preserve the housing element, commercial zoning. You know, let's not be short-sighted and lose our commercial zoning. You lose that commercial zoning, once it's gone, it's gone. You're not going to get that revenue back. So we need to make sure, I know the warehouse brings infrastructure, that's the one good thing I can say about the warehouses. But also, you've got zoning for the warehouses in the plan we presented. So we've kind of covered all the bases in there. I'd like you to take a little time to actually review it. It's not just there for, you know, it's a pretty picture to look at. I'd like you to take some time to really review it on behalf of the Robinsons. And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Kevin Miskin, followed by Martha Glubka.
Thank you, honorable council members. I sent each of you an email discussing some of my number crunching. I'm an engineer, and so I go by the numbers. And just wanted to share some of those with you. One, first of all, I didn't see any numbers relative to options three, four, and five. They just weren't in the packet at all, so I couldn't really compare them. So my comparison is really between option one and option two. Option two decreases regional commercial acreage by 58%, 58%, more than half, or as much as half, which reduces our sales tax, which we've heard about, and the opportunity for revenue for the city. Warehouses are documented as one of the poorest investments for municipalities in income and resources. In addition to that, option two increases warehousing by nearly 800%. 800%. It decreases open space by almost 10%. It offers no public facilities. Option one provides 45 acres for public use, public land. And I believe that the city received the community center, city hall, school land from the Chapman Heights developments, as well as from the Chapman Heights developments, as well as Rolling Hills developments. But in Option Two, there is no such plan for public facilities. In addition to that, Option Two decreases residential acres by nearly 47%. 47% that could be in, could be in homes that would take care of our housing element issue. Option Two, Option Two also decreases jobs by 11%. That's in the SEIR. It reduces jobs by 11% and warehouses are a very poor source of better income jobs. Matter of fact, most of those jobs are giving way to increased automation. So there will likely be even fewer jobs in the future as a result of warehouses. In addition to that, Option Two, where the warehouses will increase diesel truck traffic and emissions. Diesel truck traffic emissions account for 50% of all of the total inhalation cancer risks in the state of California. That will increase. The people of Lower Ucaipa, from Ucaipa Boulevard to County Line Road, are already unfairly burdened with exposure to diesel exhaust. Calenviron Screen, which is a planning tool developed by the city, or by the state of California, which I haven't seen used by the city, but it scores Lower Ucaipa at 82, meaning that the exposure to the people of Lower Ucaipa is 82% greater, this is exposure to diesel exhaust, is 82% greater than all other census tracts in the state of California. 82% greater. And we're going to put more warehouses and more diesel trucks, which will back up all the traffic and all those trucks will be idling on the freeway going up the grade to Ucaipa. So with that, I would suggest, I believe that there could be some, a few tweaks to Option One, but I certainly would oppose Options Two, Three, Four, and Five.
Martha Glubka, followed by Roe Randolph.
Hi, good evening, Council. Martha Glubka, one, two, I forgot my address. I think you guys have it on record, so forgive me tonight. I wasn't sure which way I was going tonight, but I'm kind of going to go back to what I spoke about one other time. Not the exact speech, but some of it. I spoke about Jimmy. And some of you weren't council members at the time, so some of you also know about it. But this is my own personal story and it was about my son Jimmy, who at five years old was diagnosed with leukemia. And at the time, 22 years ago, they did not have a cause for leukemia. It was just kind of, they just didn't know. They had ideas it might be environmental or whatever, but now it is known that benzene from diesel fuel is cause for leukemia. So at five years old, he was diagnosed. He passed away at 11 and a half years old. He went through, the first time, 42 months of daily chemo orally, through his Hickman catheter in his heart, through his spine, but daily. Spent over 400 days in the hospital during those 42 months. Was good for 18 months, relapsed with a vengeance. It came back with leukemia. It was through a spinal fluid everywhere. We ended up having to go to bone marrow transplant at City of Hope. Went through the transplant process where he passed away by arms. Seven weeks later. Councilman Venable, Councilman Thorpe, and some of you here saw photos of him at that time. He did not look like a human being when he passed. I am begging you tonight, do not let another child have this happen to them because of diesel fuel. And it will. And it could be your child, it could be your grandchildren, it could be any child in this community, and one more is too many. And I promised my son that I would fight and I would fight like hell not to see this happen again. It should never happen to another child. It should never happen to another human being. It's inhumane. I am prayerful all the time. I work with these children. I go to Fiji to see my son. I work with the children in Fiji. It is my heart, it is my soul, and I will work with it until I take my last breath. But I beg you, take it into consideration tonight. Thank you.
Roe Randolph, followed by Joanne Lassard.
Roe here. I own multiple properties on Colorado Street, and I got your packet and I was going over it real quick and I just thought maybe you guys would want to hear some of this. So the Option One is basically mimics the general plan. General plan was in 1998. It was majority rule, open space. So One does mimic and is consistent with the general plan. And then in 2008, they came out with a spinoff, which was the freeway corridor specific plan. It had 44% of the open space. The difference to that is when you flip over to page 261, you have open space and then it changes into the terminology of conservation. When you do that, you're taking open space and you're changing the zoning on it. That by law requires an EIR and then the general plan needs to be amended. 2016, from my reading, the general plan was only updated. And I couldn't find an EIR to back up the terminology. So then in 2016, you see more of the terminology, open space conservation. What does that do? That opens the door to be more flexible with rezoning. And it gives the city and people, from my understanding, a little bit more leeway to zone it as needed. So conservation, that's a big word when it comes to what you guys have going on in your packet. And it's consistent with Two, Three, Four, and Five. So we had, the general plan was majority of rule, open space, and it's been taking, getting smaller and smaller, smaller. However, in 2024, last year, there was an assembly bill that was just passed called 1889, which is called Room to Rome, and that is open space corridor for the wildlife. Now, if you live on Colorado Street and up in those areas, we get coyotes all the time and we have the hawks. They need places to go. So I want to stick with the general plan. That is the ground and the foundation of what we're supposed to build off of, and we're not doing that. And I wasn't around to come out here and say, wait, 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 we need to stick with that. So the open space is getting smaller and smaller and using terminology, which is, allows for interpretation, is getting scarier and scarier and scarier. Now, what can we do? If we didn't have the freeway corridor specific plan, we would be building on Ucaipa Boulevard. That's what Rydell was about back in the day. Let's fill up Ucaipa Boulevard because people get off Ucaipa Boulevard and they're going to do their shopping anyway. So we're starting to do more of that. How do we fix our housing if there was no freeway corridor? We would be going to private landowners in Ucaipa because all the utilities are already there. We're not hiring a developer and, you know, using conservation to kind of redistrict and rezone some of the terminology so this person will give us a lot of money to fix our infrastructure problem and our debt. So Option One goes with the general plan in 1998, and that is what we're supposed to be sticking with. That's it.
Joanne Lassard, followed by Rain Mendoza.
Joanne Lassard, I live in Redlands, but I live near Live Oak Canyon. I want to thank you, council members, very much for your time. I know it's a huge investment and contribution to the city of Ucaipa. Ucaipa is transitioning, a huge transition into the future. What is the character of Ucaipa going to be? It's up to you. It's been said that there's nothing more important than beauty. Now, that's something to ponder, but the thing is that beauty is the inspiration for the impetus of all human activities. It results in creative minds, like in Redlands ESRI or ESRI, a real advantage to the, to the Redlands community and the whole world. So can Ucaipa provide that kind of creative mind as a result of its beauty? Thank you.
Rain Mendoza, followed by Brian Rokey.
Okay. Hi, my name is Rain Mendoza and I have lived in Ucaipa for a little bit over 20 years. So I grew up in Ucaipa. I came here right before I started schooling. And I did not like how Ucaipa has developed, how I've been growing up. I always liked that I can see the mountains. When I went away to college, I missed Ucaipa. I was having dreams about it. In my dreams, I saw the mountains and I saw everything that I liked. And what I am really concerned about is the health of our community. Especially last year, I've started gardening and I've started having plants in my room because I really am concerned about the air pollution. The inland empire has the worst air pollution in the entire country. And I remember my family telling me when they were younger that it used to be so bad when they were growing up that they couldn't see the mountains over there. So I'm very thankful that I'm not growing up like that. But I still have, hopefully, 60-plus years to go. And more and more, I'm kind of thinking about if I want to stay in my town because it's my home, but seeing it change and seeing it get commercialized and developed and possibly less healthy, among other things, just doesn't really make it appealing to me. Someone did mention earlier about the development on Ucaipa Boulevard. So yeah, there has been, there are empty lots, empty buildings. So I don't understand if that is a possibility we can do, is develop on the Boulevard. It's a central location, there's a lot more traffic. If we build houses on that land, it's very inconvenient. It's inconvenient in terms of traffic, in terms of time, in terms of isolation. Imagine being a kid growing up there. You can't drive anywhere, you can't walk anywhere. Where are you going to go? And there's, if there's less open space, too, where are you going to go? And I think about the water usage, the energy usage. I hate warehouses. I know we are part of the problem, buying online and buying from large corporate retailers. And Ucaipa's always been about small business. How are we supposed to promote small business if we build warehouses there? What does that say about us? What does that say about us encouraging buying from an online website and not going to our local businesses? So I think that's also something to consider. Thank you.
Brian Rokey, followed by Chuck.
Brian Roach. Moved to Ucaipa in 1970, lived there for over 25 years. I now live on Highview Drive, which is very close to the intersection in question, Live Oak Canyon and the freeway. I can see it from the house. And my sentiment is that bringing in warehouses is a heedless thing to do. It's heedless for all the reasons you've heard here tonight. It's taking the easy way out. I know this city needs money, like all cities, and maybe needed a little more than most cities, but warehouses are not the way to go. It's destructive for all the reasons you've heard here tonight. Find another way. Dig deep. You're all smart people. Find another way to increase the city coffers and to give the employees a raise now and then. Warehouses are not the way to do this. It's too, the impacts on health are too great, the impacts on traffic are too great, the fiduciary return is not as good. Find another way. The path of least resistance, which is to the easy money, is not the way to go. So I hope you find it in your wisdom to perhaps do Option One or whatever else. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Chuck from District Five. Want to show you my hat, Ucaipa hat. It's got these mountains and valleys on it. There's no warehouses there. There's no room for them. I want to make you abundantly clear that I've heard each and every one of you council members say that you need to listen to your constituents, other than Ms. Woolsey, Woolsey, who has, by her actions, demonstrated that. So 100% of your constituents, the community in whole, has opposed warehouses. It's your duty, your obligation, you're morally bound, per se, to listen to your constituents. We're not in a race with any other city. We're Ucaipa. We have our own agenda and we don't need warehouses. And I hope you listen to your constituents 100%. Thank you.
I have no more cards.
All right. Will? I've got a list of questions, so I guess I'll start and then I'll go to Mayor Protim and then we'll work our way down. All right, Ben. Sorry. You may or may not know this, but I'm hoping you do, or maybe the city attorney does. Back in 2008, when the original plan was adopted, were the regulatory agencies in place and the laws related to the habitat concerns and the, and the stream concerns?
A lot of the laws were, the regulatory agencies were as well. The laws have changed or have become more rigorous through the years. In terms of the EIR, when you look at it, it punted all the analysis to any project that would happen, so it didn't actually do the analysis for what would kind of occur and essentially left it to any developer that wanted to do a project would then have to go through their own separate extensive review process for that. And so when you look through kind of the biological mitigation measures and all that stuff, it was all tied into, to those components.
Okay. With that in mind, there's been a couple of different maps that we've looked at tonight and you showed one from 2008, then you showed the other variants. Back in 2008, the maps and images that we have seen tonight, did they, how did that vary from the verbiage in the actual written product as far as the denoted open space and what's allowed or not allowed?
So as I kind of had reference, the open space areas were more of a mathematical calculation done for purposes of the hillside overlay requirements. And so as you look through the biological studies that we did for this update, you have areas of disturbed habitat, grazing habitat, areas that are either under farming, cow modifications, or have had some sort of improvements done already, listed as natural open space to be untouched. And then you also had areas where development was proposed that were within sensitive biological communities that would be subject to all the regulatory permits. And so areas that were within drainage channels would have to go through an extensive review process if the regulatory agencies would even allow the development to occur, plus the cost of infrastructure to even happen. So the areas that were shown in red were somewhat disingenuous because the whole process, in order to even qualify for development there, is still subject to a whole bunch of regulatory loopholes that the city didn't assess as part of the initial specific plan.
Okay, so in looking at the newer maps, we have a light green area, which is open space, then we have the dark green area, which refers to the conservation area. And then you've got the red areas, which refers to the commercial, correct? So can you elaborate a little bit more on... can you elaborate a little bit more on the light green or the dark green areas versus the red areas? I think we had a meeting earlier today and you indicated that the red areas, commercial, would be the area where a project could go in if approved. A project could go in. The EIR and everything has already been conducted. So, it kind of streamlines the operation of whatever project may come. If a property owner had an area that borders the dark green or light green areas, doesn't mean that they couldn't develop it down the road, but they would have to do their own supplemental or own EIR fund out of their own pocket that, and then whatever permits and loopholes or hurdles they have to go through with regulatory agencies dealing with habitats and watershed and that kind of thing, correct?
Yeah, so the process essentially for that development would be akin to what is currently in the existing plan. Except, we had set up the red areas, so the actual commercial area is areas that could be developed without that whole process. And then the existing plan has the areas in red where you'd have to go through that process to even get started. And so, we really punted it on, we're not going to touch those areas if someone wants to do it or if there's a need, or let's say, a city infrastructure project or a water district infrastructure project needs to do some sort of retention basin, there is a vessel to get there. But the plan itself, the commercial can be developed without that need and can move forward a lot more expeditiously without going through a whole separate review process in addition to what the city had done in 2008.
Okay. Can you elaborate on the devaluing of property or reverse, was the term reverse condemnation for whether you're taking property or by eminent domain, the laws and whatnot are related to that?
Yeah, so essentially, any areas where we have an idea that we could potentially approach the property owners to acquire land for a future infrastructure project, we, because we're going through the environmental review process of that through the Caltrans effort, all that land that's here, if you do, we have on our city's website under the freeway corridor, we have a slider tool. If you slide it back there, the area that's within the footprint of where the interchange project footprint, the different alternatives, there isn't a selected design yet, but any of the potential ones, all that remains exactly the same. So, whatever you could develop in that area today, under the existing plan, or what will be happening with options two and three are exactly the same because we're trying not to modify the land value. We're not trying to reduce the value with the idea that the city then could pick up, you know, the land for pennies on the dollar. But conversely, we're also not upzoning it so that we're paying the property owner a bunch more money for land that we were potentially, you know, trying to negotiate to purchase in the first place. So, we're not trying to give them a payday on the backs of the taxpayer, but also not trying to take advantage of them in the first place. So, we're leaving everything kind of as it is and avoiding that. And that was based, again, on city council direction, as well as one of the study sessions where we identified we're not touching this and this is the reason why. And so, when you pull the slider tool, you can see exactly, hey, this didn't change. The land use rights are identical in that footprint area.
And if there was to be some zoning changes for purposes of devaluing, that could open us up to some litigation down the road if they could prove that we had done that, correct?
Yeah, that was where the Fifth Amendment taking clause that one of the public commentators presented would come into play is they would allege that issue. And so, that's why we did not make any modifications to that area.
The purple area on the map are referred to as BP. It's Business Park, correct?
That is correct.
So, that could be office buildings. That could be warehouses. It doesn't necessarily specify what it would be, correct?
That is correct. So, the land use table in the update plan has a lot more detail on the different uses. And so, there's a much wider variety of different stuff, but it falls within that. So, it could be kind of flex use part space. It could be offices. It could be the warehouses. And so, as you're looking at the different sites, including the existing business park areas and as well as, you know, the project that's been built that is currently vacant because they're still finishing up their conditions approval. They have not received certificate of occupancy. And so, that's why it is currently vacant, but they are almost done. And the other spots is it gives flexibility for whatever the end user may be. It does not necessarily specify you must be this type of development only. It gives the range. And whoever the end user is in a building type should also vary as well. Certainly, it's not, it's not limited to you're only this or only that.
The old plan, the 2008 plan, allowed for warehouses, correct? As it is right now? And they would be right on front street, so to speak, right along, they could be right along the freeway, highly visible.
That is right. So, the land use table for the freeway corridor has no distinguishing features between the regional, commercial, and business park. And it identifies just warehousing, wholesaling, construction, storage yard, contractor yard as kind of prohibited uses as well as industrial uses.
So, in relation to this map here, we have a small section that's probably equivalent to roughly where the rest stop is, I'm presuming. Would the business park be a larger area on the 2008 map than what you're seeing there, or is that the same?
The business park in this area or?
Correct. Along the freeway.
So, this has not changed just because this is where the future interchange project is. There's also a separate provision that identifies if this rest stop were ever to disappear from Caltrans, it will go back to the underlying property owner. And so, that's why it's mapped out or zoned in the first place was because of that provision. And so, this didn't change with that update at all.
So, I guess I'm getting at here is that this option three has these warehouses behind the hillside. If we're going to have warehouses, it's an effort in trying not to have them so much on, right along the freeway in visibility, if we're going to have them.
Yeah.
Not saying that we are. But if we're going to have them, it's, you know, try to be mindful of the visual, visual things that you see when you come through Ucaipa, the presence of open space in the hillside. If those warehouses weren't there and there was houses there, in order for that to happen, they have to figure out how to get the utilities from the, this side of the freeway down into that canyon. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, as part of the infrastructure, the water line that is, that makes the most sense to bring down is from Avenue D down Oakland Road. And so, sewer is likely available and accessible, but the water line and everything would be brought down from here, then brought under the freeway and then across here. And then, as part of the update, we removed the roadway connection through here and a bridge here. Instead, focused on rehabbing this bridge here and widening it, and widening Oakland Road and then putting it up through that street. And the warehouse project, specifically, would be responsible for doing all those improvements.
So, that's something they're willing to tackle, that challenge, or pulling all those utilities to the other side of the freeway if that were to proceed?
Yeah, they would be conditioned.
If it didn't proceed, then we're going to have a little bit of a bigger challenge trying to get utilities over that site. So, that's why, one reason it could affect the housing, correct?
That is correct.
And then, if the housing doesn't go, let's just say it does go in there. What's right next door? It's a water treatment plant, correct?
That is right. So, the public facilities that were calculated in the old specific plan still remain as the wastewater treatment facility, but it's been omitted just so that it goes under our standard just permitting rules, which it did technically in the old plan. It just simplifies it for, for the water district. Yeah, there's a wastewater treatment facility that's right next to where these proposed warehouses are.
I think I have more. The statement was made earlier by one of our last couple of speakers is that if you make a change from open space to conservancy, then an EIR needed to be done. Is that something that needs to be done? Is there some sort of legal thing that says we have to do that? Because on the maps, it has open space and then we've updated it later to say conservancy.
So, the adding conservancy or conservation, so we are doing the EIR for that. I did speak with that public commenter before. I think there are a few different details that are incorrect or inconsistent. So, the freeway corridor, a long time ago, before the 2008 plan was officially adopted, the area was kind of just pre-zoned as planned development. So, when the city incorporated and kind of before, it had been set up as just planned development. And then in 2005, the city council directed staff, kind of following the general plan update in 2004, to prepare an update and create a specific plan for this area, which was then adopted in 2008. And that is the current plan that is in effect now. And then we are currently going through the update right now, which adds open space conservation. And the conservation is not meant to be kind of a flexible where you can do a whole bunch of different stuff. It's meant for habitat protection.
Okay. Just a couple more and then I'll pass the baton because I'm sure they have questions they want to ask, too. And we want to go on tonight. So, there was a statement made by one of our constituents this evening about traffic, several of them, related to the traffic, the wear and tear on the roadways. There are agreements that could be pursued as it relates to the traffic going from maybe the freeway to the warehouses if they get approved, that we could enter in with them. Isn't there that they could help with some provision in providing a percentage towards maintenance of the roadways in that area?
That is correct. And as some of the prior city, or some of the city council members will remember from last year, city council also adopted a policy regarding the formation of CFDs specifically for ongoing maintenance of public facilities. And so, that would also be conditioned. So, they would be obligated to maintain a separate funding source specifically for police and other provision and fire services, as well as just general public services, including roadway maintenance.
I'm going to make a statement, then I'm going to ask a question. This has been in, the warehouses have been talking to the city probably for the last four, maybe five years, I think. And one of the things that I've heard in one of our, we've had a few meetings. One of our meetings was that, you know, they're going to do some roadway improvements to address some traffic concerns going from the freeway to the street drive, whatever you want to call it, that leads up to the warehouses. What kind of effect on traffic would that have? Was it improve traffic flows? Does it, does it make it more congested with the things they're going to do? I mean, how is that going to affect our traffic down by the freeway?
So, when we did the analysis for the freeway corridor substantial plan, we did the analysis with a baseline, assuming the pumpkin patch was in season. So, we did the traffic counts during October, when the pumpkin patch was during full kind of till and did our basis for how the freeway corridor update would impact traffic during the heavy time of the year when the pumpkin patch was. And so, with the improvements that they would be obligated for and the overall improvements, we would reduce the traffic impacts kind of throughout for a net positive. I did want to kind of note as well, there was a comment that the EIR mitigation measures did remove some of the traffic stuff. And that's just because level service is no longer a CEQA-related impact, but it's still a conditional approval that we do have on those projects. So, they'll be required to do roadway improvements, or any project in the freeway corridor will be required to do certain roadway improvements. It's just not a EIR environmental mitigation, but it's still identified. And so, those improvements would reduce impacts based on the level service analysis that was done for the freeway corridor.
Okay. One last thing. I know I said that probably three questions ago. If you didn't have warehouses behind that hill and we put commercial in there, because of its location, not visible from the freeway, tucked behind that ridge line, how would that, would that, would that location support commercial retail?
I will say that based on some other projects that we've had where they've requested major variances for larger signs to attract freeway exposure, I imagine that we'll get a similar request for a bid sign so that they could be seen from the freeway, so.
Okay. I'll stop talking now. Mayor Protim, thank you, sir.
Well, I don't like any of them, to be honest with you. I just, I don't. There's, there's too much, you know, there's too much red tape in every one, every one that you put out. So, that's my take on it, you know? Just like the man says, you know, the, the road. What did he say? He was just up here. Anyways. Just going to take some more work, you know, to get, get this to where it's, 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 it'd be good for everybody. But right now, I don't like them all. So, that's all I have.
Councilman Miller?
Sure you want me to go? Yeah, go ahead. Ben, thank you. And I want to thank the staff for putting everything together. You've actually done what we've asked you to do. So, thank you for the options. That's what we asked for. Give us options. Put it up there so we can talk about it. One thing I want to make clear is we'll probably give some direction tonight to bring something back because we're missing a council member tonight. Councilman Beaver's not feeling well. And it wouldn't be appropriate for us to really go two-directional without him here. But I think we can give you some direction tonight, I think, from the dais of where we want to go. Maybe when it comes back to us the next meeting so we can actually vote on something. So, I think we need to finally get to that point. Just kind of researching, obviously, a lot of these decisions were made before us new council members were on here. And I've got to talk to some of the older council members that were on here before. And historically, looking at what's happened, we just, we're at a decision point to finally do something. That's really what's going on. Is there anybody here from Pacific Oaks tonight? How you doing? Good. Did you want to say anything to us? I don't know. Why don't you come up and talk to us for a little bit? I'd appreciate it. I know you're kind of outnumbered tonight, but just tell us what the benefits are of your project and maybe give us a quick highlight. All I've seen is a video that, that your folks had showed me, so.
Yeah, sure. So, I'm Dan Floriani. You guys hear me okay? I'm founder of Pacific Industrial. I'm heavily outnumbered tonight. And honestly, I didn't come here to speak. I came here to listen and I've been doing that. I actually like this process. Not everyone needs to agree and I appreciate everyone's comments. I didn't, we didn't come into this project lightly. And we didn't just throw together something to propose mega warehouses. We actually really sat down for a year initially with Ray Casey, a long time ago, talking about his desire to make sure that they remove the zoning to get the already approved warehouses that could be on the freeway, including the pumpkin patch area, and see if they could do something that was a little more intelligent, that actually created jobs in an area that had historically been really difficult to develop. So, when we had those discussions, we really sat down and actually talked with the pumpkin patch. We talked with various property owners. We talked with the city. We met with council members. The reason I give you that feedback is because we knew traffic was a big issue with the pumpkin patch, as it is right now. We know that the ridge line was incredibly important, that open space was important. It's a very rural community. All these things we took into account when we designed our project. I think what maybe not everyone in the room fully understands, I admittedly have been staring at it for five years, is we, you know, I started the company not to do "normal developments," quote unquote, to do, to be able to go in communities and work with them and understand what the issues are and trying to see if we could do something that was different, elevated, try and raise the bar for what, what our world of development is. And I respect everyone's opinion that they don't love them and you guys live here and I get that. But what we did is design something that was pretty unique. And if you look at it, we, we aren't just trying to develop the entire property. It's 330 acres. We are setting aside 92 acres, plus or minus, as permanent open space. I can tell you, I, I know everyone lives in this community. I bet there are very few people that have ever been or ever seen this property because it's been fenced for 75 years. You haven't gone through and fished with your son. Like, no one has access to this property. And I've been through it many times. What we would do as a result of our development is open up 94 acres, so, some odd, you know, give me a plus or minus, there are a couple acres, that then creates a trail that opens us up to the entire community. I don't think that's appreciated or understood, maybe. And then I think I've been pretty open about, we have 60 acres in front of it. That's, that satisfies the housing condition. We've openly said we'd be willing to even donate that in some capacity to the city in order for you guys and the constituents behind us and the rest of the 55,000 residents of your city to be able to decide what works best for the city to do it. To me, if you've talked with the pumpkin patches, they need ancillary additional parking during certain times in the, of the year, obviously. It could be a really good spot to facilitate that. There's a million other things you guys could do and There's a million other things you guys could do and look at and explore in the coming years to do something on there. I also don't think that's very appreciated, how unique that particular offer is. We've also, as you guys did talk about on the offsites, it's a Herculean effort to figure out how to get the offsites here. Just to put it in context, our latest proposal is about $38 million of total cost to bring that water line from what road Ben mentioned, the road, four miles, bringing it down and under the freeway to get capacity there. That serves our project, but it's way oversized. It's not just for our project, it's so that every single property owner on that side of the freeway, for the first time in their lives, will have the actual opportunity to do development, which includes commercial and hotels and a variety of other uses that are compatible with what the end use is. You cannot propose a 20,000-square-foot retail project and support a $38 million infrastructure pole. It just doesn't happen. We're doing that without a dollar of tax money. No citizen here would be funding any of that. And so, you know, obviously, people are concerned, it's an empty warehouse, I mean, this is what we do, that's not why I would wanna go down through all this effort and sit in front of 100 people who don't like me and talk to you guys and propose this kinda concept. I'm doing it 'cause I believe it'd be so unique and so original, that it would actually raise the bar for what development should look like in California and can. It provides a public partnership. As far as it relates to traffic, I'm more concerned about traffic than almost anyone. I don't wanna go through all this pain and energy and time and investment and develop two projects that don't work because the traffic's bad. What we've proposed and agreed to is to double the capacity of the Live Oak Road, the Live Oak Off-Ramp, we double the capacity of it in its current condition right now, and we add about 10% traffic to it, at full capacity. So, I, again, all these things can get blurred, I don't love these forums where it's hard to get these opinions out, most people already have an opinion before you sit in front of them. But, I'm a human, just like you guys, I have three kids, I care about this, my grandparents lived in Calamasa, they worked at the Gwasty Winery as an electrician and a secretary, I've been out here my entire life, I get it, there's always a hesitation for development, and, and maybe we're not the solution, maybe we are, but I can tell you, it didn't happen by accident, it wasn't without thought, it wasn't without talking to people, it wasn't without care, we didn't rush into it, and we're still here trying to figure it out. You guys can decide whether it fits in your vision of the city or not, but at least you should walk away knowing we're trying to do something unique and different, and you will not see it, you will not see these buildings from the, anywhere around. I can prove it to you, we can show you a video, I didn't come to that today, 'cause I came here to listen, but you can't, that was not a small undertaking, that took me a year of design work to figure out how to do that, and how to do it without bringing or exporting a single truck of soil in or out of the property, not one. I can tell you, I've done developments all over California, and that's very hard to achieve, and we've committed to doing that on this one, 'cause I think it's better. So, none of these things might make a difference to anyone behind me, but you're a town of 55,000 people, so I suspect there's some people that are not represented here today, too. And so, again, hopefully, that gives you a high-level version of where we are, who we are, and what we've, what we've done on this site. Obviously, we respect your guys' opinion and that of the residents, and you guys get to decide what the course of action is.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you coming up and giving that summary, so we could just have a more broader discussion on it, but thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Ben, I had a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. So, when we're looking at the, the two overlays, or the several overlays we had, does the description in the regional commercial and business park, AK red and purple that the mayor brought up, areas in the existing plan, both call out for warehousing?
That is correct.
So, the original 08 plan, it's really just smaller areas of warehousing, right?
So, it is...
Compared to the, the option three?
Yes, and, no, so, the areas themselves are pretty broad, but they were certainly, I think the scale...
I mean, what the footprint would look like.
Yeah, the footprint's a little bit different, based on kinda what was zoned, but, but yeah, the land uses is the same.
Okay, if that's true, then i- is wholesale and warehouse uses, as well as manufacturing and industrial uses allowed in both districts under permitted use table?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I didn't see the difference, but can you confirm if there's any difference between commercial and business park uses listed in that table?
No, they read exactly the same, it's the same uses through the whole thing.
Does wholesale and warehouse and manufacturing slash industrial have any, anything that limits what types of uses fit in that category?
No, it's very broad language, and so there's no specificity on what is, or more importantly, what types of warehousing structures are prohibited.
Have we permitted warehouses in the regional commercial district already?
Yes, there's the transwestern, now Brookfield one, that's almost completely construction.
Okay, we had a lot of great comments tonight, I'm glad we had this meeting where the public could tell us their feelings of, of what they feel. In essence, we're really approving an overlay eventually of what it's gonna look like. We're not landowners, we're just approving the little overlay, people that own land can decide what to do with their own property, how they're gonna develop it, who they're gonna work with, what they're gonna build, you know, in this country, you can do what you want with your own property still. We're just providing the overlay of what that will look like. Has, we've had a lot of talks about budget in the last year and a half, and I know we went to the community, the city did, for Measure S, and that's, you know, something that had to be done, but if you're looking at future sustainability for revenue, you've got to come up with something, I think this is our last bite at it, of something we can do, whatever that design's gonna look at, it's the last bite at the apple to maybe land something that will be sustainable, that we can handle the revenue increases that we'll have. I mean, contracts are gonna go up, God bless our public safety friends, but I know their contracts are gonna go up, I know what it costs us to do two fire trucks tonight, and these things will, will happen, 'cause it's, it's basic in public service, or what we're doing, you have revenue come in, right? And you have services. Now, if you don't have the revenue coming in, then you cut services, and we really don't go down this road, because our community expects top-level services, expects, expects, they wanna see, be safe, and they wanna clean community, and they want things handled. So, that requires revenue down the line, that's why strategically, we have to have our community involved of what do you want? And we have to figure out how to pay for it. So, we have to have a little foresight of how we're gonna do these things, that's why thank you for putting it on the board, it needs to, it's gonna come back to us, 'cause I'd like Councilman Beaver to be here also to have part of this, I know he's watching from home, and he, and I hope he feel better, Councilman, but we need to vote on this, we need to decide what we're gonna do finally and move forward. I, I personally don't feel we need to keep kicking this back. However you feel about warehousing, I gave an analogy to somebody when I first got on the board, and I, I just have this analogy, you fly into Ontario Airport, and what do you see? Giant row of warehouses, not the most attractive thing, you know? But, and if you think about, what are we gonna do for the future for sustainability for our community? Us on the dais have to make decisions now, good or bad, you gotta make a decision on what you're gonna do. Are there other options? Is option one that, in 08, was pretty viable at the time? Has market conditions changed since we talked about the market conditions of 09, 08, when we had the huge housing crisis? I think things have rebounded a little bit, we may be able to tweak option one a little bit, I have some notes on that, but I won't go too long, we may be able to look at that one more time. And we had, like today, there was, one of the speakers got up and talked, they gave us a new plan, three hours before the meeting. It, it's hard to, you know, to go through that in three hours, I'll be glad to look at it, but three hours before the meeting, you know, that's gonna be tough to do. So, we'll be, we'll look at it, we've got a couple of weeks before we come back again. Option three was presented also, there's, there's pluses to that, too. Every option has pluses and minuses, we just have to make decisions. But, I, as Councilman in District One, my concern is, number one, where are you gonna put things? Okay? If you're gonna have to beat your arena numbers on housing, where are you gonna do it? Are we gonna build out in our beautiful jewel that we talked about, our beautiful community that was once a small-bedroom community, and now we're a medium-sized city that needs services? So, where, where are we gonna provide housing? You heard the school district say, well, we're, we can take the kids, we can take the students, if you guys decide to, you know, allow housing in a certain area. However developers wanna do, well, where are you gonna build? Well, we have a plan for that. So, it just depends on, I think the, the original 208 plan had maybe plans for a couple of schools, but after listening to them tonight, it sounded like they didn't need two schools, I guess Dunlap can handle one of them and, and the other one, but, you know, these are all big items that we talk about, but if you've been sitting in the, in any of these council meetings for the last couple of years, they just keep getting pushed down the road, and we just finally gotta deal with it, and I think, honestly, the next meeting, we need to make a decision. I think the sentiment I heard tonight was option one, clearly, that was clearly it. I, I think there's a sentiment against warehousing, we do have 54,000 residents, we don't know what they, they feel, I think I've got a total of 26 emails since this has been posted, maybe next week I'll have 26 more, I don't know, try to respond back to all of them, read everything that's sent, but maybe the community has, I don't know what the whole community feels, but we have a strong, strong feeling from the people we have, and, you know, if you look at, you know, if that's a snapshot of how people feel, that's a snapshot of how people feel. So, I'll close with just a couple of things, there's, there's things we could do, we could amend the freeway corridor specific plan, I don't wanna kick it back down the road again, but that is an option if you have to, staff probably doesn't wanna hear me say that, but with, that is something we could do, you can tighten the zoning definitions and development standards, you can get, you can redo that, that'll, planning commission's gonna have some issues if we have to do that, you can adopt a new city ordinance on corridor specific, there are some things that you could tighten up on that, I'm not saying we have to do these things, but there are things we can do to narrow the warehouse question if it continues in the community. You know, you can deny individual warehouse projects, we have the power to do that if we want to. I think Mr., the presentation from Pacific Oaks, he explained it very well tonight, you know, I think our city staff, I would ask that as we, after Ms. Wusley's done, that they bring this back to us, including the zoning issues that we've talked about, that we bring it to a vote next meeting. And I think, if we really think about where we're at, we're kinda at a critical moment right now. This thing was updated last year, and there was community feedback, if anybody reviewed the, the meeting from the 23rd and 24th, you can hear that meeting was pretty loud, or very passionate. You know, are we killing jobs, future jobs, or hurting our economy, economy? No, not at all, our goal's to get high-quality jobs, we want retail, office, medical, hospitality, we want all of that, we want a steady revenue for our community. Will this call lawsuits from property owners? Well, we're following legal and fair process, the specific amendment plan, and public hearings and due process, property owners have significant value in their land, and they are allowed for commercial purposes, we're not taking property, we're just seriously, clearly setting expectations for land use. Isn't warehouse already restricted? These are questions I had. Yes, it's limited, but we have community input that we need to consider now. What about small businesses, and the need for storage or light warehousing? Well, we can look at tailor options for everything, it can be very small or not. So, we have to remind ourselves, you know, what the importance of this meeting really is. I wanna thank everyone that was here for tonight for sharing their thoughts, whether you're in your supportive or opposition, this is the democratic process. We should be about balance, which is protecting our quality of life here in this beautiful town, while responsibly planning for the future. The decisions we're making today isn't about blocking growth, it's about ensuring the right kinda growth, the kind of benefits for everyone, sustainability for the city of Yucapá that community will cherish, and we can move forward. As your council member, my priority is to listen, make decisions based on the long-term vision, and to do what's best for everyone in this room and every resident. Let's keep working together to make Yucapá a proud place to call home. That's all I have.
Councilman?
Okay, at the last meeting, I did abstain on that discussion, because to me, it was, for me, it was rushed, and I just felt like I didn't have as much information as I really would like. So, since that time, I've had discussions with affected parties, I've had conversations with the property owners that did reach out to me, I've had discussions with many of the constituents in my district that reached out to me, I've heard pros and I've heard cons, either way. I've reviewed the options several times. One lady did comment something that I want to address, she made the comment, where are we gonna get the water? I attend the water district meetings because I'm learning what they do, which is in conjunction that fits in with the city. I can't speak for them, but what I have observed is they are years ahead on their planning. And in fact, on May 16th, there's going to be a tour that I think you've been invited to, at least I've received the invitation, to the city, and maybe staff and everything, and they're gonna show us exactly what they have in the works, how they're planning, and that they will be ready for whatever growth we have. I do believe that Justin needs to be here, and he needs to be involved in the final vote there, so, and that vote actually comes next week. But, I'm gonna step out here, and I'm gonna say that I'm actually in favor of option three, and for many reasons, because it pretty well addresses all of the issues that, you know, have been a concern, it gives us commercial acreage, the open spaces are high, visibility is low, I've seen the plans for the warehouses, and they're beautiful buildings, and it's been stressed and explained to me, you know, that they will not be seen. So, I think it would be a great outcome if we went with option three, but that'll have to be decided next week, and when Justin can be here.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Proton, you had something else?
Yeah. You know, each, each one of these have some kinda red tape on every one of them, you know, you vote for, for one, you scratch the pumpkin patch, and that's, you know, you vote for two, you end up getting for the warehouses, you know, three brings the warehouses, four brings warehouses, I mean, it's, it's one, one thing after another, I mean, it just looks to me like Sacramento, how Sacramento does everything, they put all kinds of different red tape on every vote that you make, so if you make one, you're going against some of the other ones that you don't want. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I don't think it was staff's intent to apply red tape, I think at the end of the day, staff is showing, because the 2008 plan, which is the one that currently exists and governs that area right now, doesn't allow some of the property owners who own the property to do what they wanna do in terms of the growth of their property that they own. And so, yeah, option one, I think Ben highlighted it quite well, we have to update option one, because it's not consistent.
Yeah, I think the message is that there's, no matter what direction we go, there is a, a consequence to what the, the outcome is, there's no such thing as a perfect plan where every single person comes out completely happy, and that's part of the, the, the decision-making process that you guys are gonna have to do, is, there's no, there's nothing that's gonna have complete 100% support from every single person everywhere.
In addition, I wanted to clarify that option four was presented to city staff by Premium Land Development through Robinson. So, we just presented, we're highlighting the, the proposal that they gave us in February as part of your consideration, to be totally transparent and to include the document they wanted to present to you for consideration. What was sent to us today at 3:00, I can't really tell you how it differs, but we presented the plan that was provided to the city staff that they wanted you to consider.
I, I never seen that one, and then the Robinsons I talked to...
I, I never seen that one, and then the Robinsons I talked to quite often. And then the one they sent me was the one that Premium Land Development sent me as well. This isn't, this isn't part of it.
So I did identify, so West Coast Entitlement sent two different concepts of the plan.
Or West Coast, yeah.
One of them was a hybrid of option three in their version, which we referred to as option four. So it was still having some of the mixed-use development, but added more warehousing and got rid of open space, which is the one we did not include in the package just because it's, it falls in line. So if you guys were supportive of either three or four or a hybrid between the two, that was the one that kind of fit within there, but still had a number of the legal challenges that we identified. But option four was kind of where the direction that they were going, which was a more heavy development approach. And then in the emails that they did send, there was a map reference that was different than the versions that they had sent as well. So there was one map that was different than what we had seen before as well.
Is there a timeline that, I mean, we have to get, I mean, you guys, it's, if, it feels like that you have to vote on something right now. We have to bring it to you now and stuff. Is there a timeline on this?
Tonight, because we're in a study session, we're only seeking somewhat action so that we can know how to start to proceed to prepare you, to get you ready for a vote on what option you want.
Yeah, well, I don't like any one of them, though, so.
And there's provisions detailed in the staff report that highlight the amount of cost, the length of time to start from scratch, to make amendments. We're just providing the information for your consideration so that you know that if you want to scrap them all and start new, the costs associated with that and the length of time that's going to take to bring something back to you for your consideration.
But the retail on that, I mean, you got to, I got an email today on the retail money, the sales tax that we get, uh, sales tax that we get from a retail store would far surpass anything from a warehouse. So, I mean, it's, we would recover that cost back if we did something like that, right? By retail?
That's, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, but the location on, on where the warehouse is put, you're probably not going to get frontage freeway retail back tucked up in there. The other thing is that I think it was based on input received, and Ben and Fermine, correct me if I'm wrong, but the conversation of do, do people want housing next to the water treatment facility? That's something you have to consider. The, the plan right now in option one that was passed in 2008, it has the ability for warehousing along the freeway. Right when you come down the hill, you'll, you'll see it. There was no due diligence back then to, to tuck it away and hide it. And I hear what people are saying. I've been here for many a meetings regarding this topic. I, I hear it all, but at the end of the day, I think staff, based on council direction back in 2021, threw that grant to do an update to this area because option one is no longer consistent with the mandates that we have to meet with the state. So we did get input. City staff did meet with the property owners. City council members met with property owners. All of them got input from city council. So at the end of the day, I think the plans and the options we're presenting to you is to let you know of, of pulling it all together. Staff believes that option three is the one that kind of addresses every property owner who owns land in this specific plan. We're trying to meet the various needs that they have. We, we can't change the water courses, and nothing from the 2008 plan to the proposed plan reduces their mitigation that they have to do that are, that own the property that are within those water channels. That hasn't changed. Now, the colors on the map maybe look and, look different, but when you're reviewing the words in the plan itself, it still required all those mitigation efforts. We are not trying to change anything. We are not just looking at the colors. This is a simple, simple way to kind of view it, but the details in the plan in 2008 and what would, what's proposed now with either September or March, which is option two or option three, detail the requirements of what those properties are going to have to do to finally develop that. I, I think the gentleman who came up that spoke on behalf of Pacific Industrial, whether you want to hear what he's saying or not, $30 million, $38 million to bring the infrastructure through the other side of the freeway is very important to hear because I think it's very difficult for anyone trying to develop housing. Anything else could even, could even pay to even do the infrastructure. And, and so we've had this plan since 2008, and I don't think only one development has occurred, which is the warehouse that's right next to county line. For 2008 to current, we've been out of a recession. We've, property owners in this area have been able to develop based on the 2008 plan that had a lot of input from the community and had a lot of city council review. Nothing's come to fruition because of the cost of the infrastructure. And so that's kind of, you, you can change, we can go back to the drawing board, change all the colors, but at the end of the day, you still have to bring utilities to the south side of the freeway. And that's been the tipping point for every single family that's been involved in this freeway corridor. And it used to be the Robinsons and the Palmer's and, 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 you know, generations of their families have had to battle back and forth regarding this whole section. And it was, the end of the day, the city council years ago, Drew Sees, Riddell, all of them, in the sense of, and, 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 in the conversation with the community of, this council knew that this would be an area that this city would need at build-out to sustain itself. And it's been a push-pull ever since, and it's just because of the expense, and we thought this would be a way to help development come to the area. And at the end of the day, it's caused years. And the only plan that got adopted was in 'oh eight, and until today, we still have nothing in that area. And that's because of the utilities and infrastructure.
Thank you. With, all due respect, Mayor Protim, it, it's time to do something. You know, we also, one of the things we've got to consider is, on one of the plans, we got to give back $748,000, as we've talked about fiscal responsibility in several meetings. So we'll have to figure that out if we went with option one or two. But I just want to remind us, and there's several good options there. You know, the one you're talking about, there are definitely several good options. But warehousing seems to be the issue. That, that's, that's the issue. But the issue for us also is, how do we develop so we can sustain the revenues that we're going to need for the future strategically? All right? That, remember the two, that, that's what's coming together. We're a town that's growing. We'd like to keep it the way it is, real beautiful, but we are growing. What, look what's going on around us, clearly. But we'll, we'll do the best we can to manage it effectively. That's what we're trying to do. But we're finally at that juxtaposition where we have to do something, and we can't just keep pushing it down the road. I think the next meeting, bring the plans back. We'll have time to look at the latest one that came to us three hours ago. We'll look at all of them. We'll put them back up there, as I said last meeting, and by then, we'll have our, our other council member here, and we vote. We vote on the plan that we want to approve, which is the overlay for the area so we can move forward finally. I, I think we need to do that. I'll, I'm, I'm in, I'm asking our council to do that. We need to finally move forward and stop moving this thing down the road. It may cause some consternation with people. I know there's plenty of people out there that have opinions, but we've got to move this thing forward. It's been, it's been too long, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Good, ma'am.
I was just going to say that I was going to ask that the staff bring back at the next meeting, option three, and if it needs to be tweaked in some way, you know, maybe see if it can be adjusted in some way. And, you know, we're not going to placate everybody. There's always going to be somebody unhappy here. But I do agree, we have to move on. It's time. We have to make a decision.
All right, so you wanted direction tonight, and our next meeting isn't until May 12th. So do we need like a motion? Like she's, Councilwoman Woolsey's asking that we bring back items related to item three. Do we need to vote on that, or is that good enough direction, or do you need more than that?
No, we're not looking at any, for you to vote and make a motion. We're just seeking some kind of action on what you'd like us to return, turn with on May 12th.
Well, she would like to see things related to item three, and then Bob wants to see, sorry, Councilman Miller wants to see all the, all the plans again. So that way, Councilman Beaver will be present. He can voice his, his side of things. But that's, what, three weeks away?
Would council want me to do my full presentation again? Because I will be happy to do it, but if time is of the essence, given the agenda, we can also do a much more condensed presentation since Councilmember Beaver is also listening, and so.
I believe he was listening from home. I, I don't know, council, are you okay with a summary?
A summary, definitely.
Okay.
I would just suggest we'll bullet point it again and get them back up there, and we can do the pros and cons again, but maybe by, we'll have a couple of weeks to vet the other one, and then bring that back up there, and we just get to it. That's what we need to do.
I'd like to at least recommend that if we're going to put a new plan that was submitted at 3:00, that we've replaced that plan, I guess, with option four, because that was the plan they provided to staff. So if that's not the plan they want to recognize, we need a target.
You guys work that out.
Okay.
So do you have enough direction, or do we need to hammer something else out? Is that good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you, city staff. Okay, that brings us to council member comments and reports. Let's start with Councilman, Councilwoman Woolsey.
I attended the Green Valley High School presentation last week, which was revisiting Anne Frank's life and legacy. Mark Martin, who is a 12th grader, was the tour guide for our group. And they had banners hanging and everything that depicted pictures of her early life, her childhood, the home, her family, her, you know, her history and everything that had all been retrieved through, I guess, through her book. And it was very interesting. And the, Anne Frank's diary, I never knew this, but it is the second most sold book globally after the Bible, which I found very interesting. And I did compliment the school on the fact that they're teaching this because so many people and things want to deny that that all happened. And Mark did a great job, and he told us he loves history, and this project was very special to him because he had family that had survived the Holocaust.
Councilwoman. Mayor Protim?
Well, we had to run this weekend, and I didn't get a chance to go. So that was a bummer. But my daughter's coming down from Tennessee, and we're doing some stuff around the house trying to get her ready for her and stuff, so I missed the time. But I guess we had a good turnout, right, Megan? Had a great turnout, so anyways, there's always next time, right? So we have lecture series on Healthy Yucaypa. When I went to the Healthy Yucaypa Committee this past time, they were doing lecture series. And it was about opioids this weekend, or this past Monday, the 21st. The next one is 517. It's going to be on the water and sun safety. I have, all my friends are coming around with cancer from the sun and everything, and I've heard that sunscreen is even worse for you. So, but, and I didn't know that. Yeah, so anyways, that causes just as much cancer as, as, as the sun does, so cover up. Suicide prevention is on June 16th, and the nutrition one is in August. We have a committee member, he's doing the lecture series.
Kanson Wong?
No. Matt. Underwood. Matt, he's a doctor as well. So I'd love for everybody to show up to these and, you know, just kind of get educated on what's going on. So I appreciate everybody, and, and I think we still are looking for a high school liaison for the Park and Recreation Committee. So if you know any high schoolers that want to join that committee, we'd love to have them.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
May 5th, I think we have our ribbon cutting of our, one of our newest restaurants in town. Isn't it? To the 6th? Oh, all right. Bad info, ma. Guess I need to check my calendar. And Megan, I don't mean to put you on the spot. How was our rave? Shrek rave, is that what it was?
Yes, it was a Shrek rave. The rave sold out, and it was a great event. We had no incidents, and the people that attended were dressed up like Fiona and Shrek and the donkey, and it was a really great event for those that enjoy themselves from Shrek. That could be Councilmember Woolsey because I see her green jacket, so maybe that's her inner Shrek coming out. I'm not sure, but I do know that the event was successful and well-received.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. It's not as well-received as the Music and Arts Festival, though, which will take place this Friday and Saturday in the Uptown.
And, and Wizard of Oz.
That's right.
Same time, opens on Friday night, correct?
You nailed it. Wizard of Oz opens Friday, Music and Arts Festival Friday, 6:00 to 10:00, and Saturday, 12:00 to 9:00 p.m.
A lot of opportunities. And then we also have Love Yucaypa's coming up, but that's.
It's also Saturday.
The 3rd, right?
It's also Saturday, the 3rd, and it'll start kickoff at the Y-Pac at 8:00 a.m. And then everybody will go out to their projects and make a difference and just love this community, and then they can come back to the festival and fill their bellies and throw their kids on the jumpers, not literally, but pay for the kids' own, and then their children can enjoy the jumpers. And then they can go home and go to bed, wake up the next morning and go see Wizard of Oz.
There you go. It's a lot going on. All right, thank you, interim city manager. Any announcements?
No, I think you just covered them all.
Okay. Thank you to staff and everybody for being here tonight and all your hard work. Next regular meeting will be May 12th. With that, we are adjourned. Current time is a quarter to 10:00, so 9:45.